Good evening, welcome to tonight's school committee meeting, the first one of the new year 2014. There would you lead us in pledge allegiance, Jason?
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As I said, it's the first meeting in 2014. We were supposed to meet on the second, but the superintendent canceled school that day. He also canceled the school committee meeting. But, he's kind to us, we don't have to make the day up. So, thank you.
You're quite welcome.
Consent agenda, minutes of December 12th, 2013, oath of vows and parole.
Make a motion, accept the consent agenda, is read.
Second. Okay, we have a motion made and seconded. Any discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. unanimous. Thank you. Okay, Kelly Miller Circus request. Our request used Wickham Field. We don't know the exact date, it's going to be June of this year, give or take. But, Selectman Knox has asked that we make the field available once again. He's also coordinating with Park and Wrap. And if everyone remembers about three to four years ago, the last time they were here, it was a wonderful event. So, he's asked that we give permission again for that. So, I'm plenty happy to take a motion that we allow Kelly Circus to use Wickham Field on a date to be determined in June as coordinated with the Park and Wrap.
Make a motion to approve use of the Wickham Field by Kelly Miller Circus in the date to be determined. Second.
Motion made seconded. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. unanimous. Thank you. Okay, we have some presentations today. Want to take them, Superintendent?
Sure, I'd like to welcome Mr. Levine this evening, and he's brought two ex-students, so to speak, that participated in the trip last year, Emily Sullivan and Liam Manning. So, welcome. And, Mr. Levine, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. This year, we are once again planning on a trip to Washington DC. I've brought along two students from last year who will go through with you our trip from last year, give you a little bit of an update, and then we'll talk some more after they speak. So, this is Liam and Emily. Thank you for helping out and for coming.
Thank you for having us.
Just off a second ago.
Should that thing...
Did you hear that come up?
Watch your feet.
What's this clock do?
I'm sorry, hold on.
Go ahead and step up to the microphone, please. Thank you. Thank you, Rich.
Okay, so last year, we went on the Washington DC trip for 2013. And there were three bus rides. There were two bus rides that allowed PG-13 movies because parents allow their children. Then there was one who didn't because the parents didn't allow their children.
The bus ride was approximately, is it like eight hours?
Eleven on the way back.
Okay, eleven on the way back. Which, fun fact, we got stuck in traffic, so we all had to stop at McDonald's.
But even though I was stuck on the PG bus, which couldn't watch like all the good movies, I thought it was still pretty fun. Like, there was a lot more space in the bus, and I just had like a really good time relaxing and chilling. We also went to the Bolger Center, which was very fun.
That's the hotel.
Oh, that was the hotel.
And the World War II Memorial, which was very sad, if I do say so myself, just seeing all of the...
Memorials?
The Vietnam Memorial, there was a big wall, and it had like all of the, I think, the names of everyone who died.
And it was like, it was like a mirror, so when you were looking at it, you could see yourself. It was cool. Not, not because you could see yourself, but it was cool because, you know.
The Tomb of the Unknowns, it was kind of like a ceremony, I would say. And I think a few students from maybe our school and other schools were able to participate. And I thought that was really interesting how they incorporated students that were like involved. And I thought it was very cool just to see the ceremony and everything that went on.
For the Lincoln Memorial, I think that was like one of our first stops, right? We went there at night, right off the bus. So, that was really cool to see it at night because it was all like illuminated, and it was really cool.
And then the Jefferson Memorial, I think, was our last stop, or it was on the last day. And that was very cool because there was like, like a bay of waters, I think, and you could just like take pictures, and it was really nice, and it was really pretty.
It was cool.
The Arlington National Cemetery. Just like overlooking the cemetery, there are just so many graves, and just like you could see like people's last names of your friends, and like everyone like found their own last name. I thought it was really interesting and very sad, too, just...
And then the Ser to me, it's the Ser...
Cemetery.
The Pentagon was kind of intimidating because we got to go through a lot of security. But once we got inside, it was really interesting. I was worried I was going to step on the wrong tile and like set off a mood or something, but it was fun. And we got to speak to, was it one of the, someone from the Marine Corps?
Yeah.
Yeah? Yeah. And they were like our tour guides, so it was really cool.
Yeah, and I think some people like weren't allowed in originally because like their name wasn't on a certain list, which shows like how like high like on guard they are.
The day we went to the Martin Luther King Junior Memorial, it was like two degrees out, it was freezing. But, I mean, it was really cool to see. It was very like lifelike. Like, you wouldn't really realize it was a statue because it was, the details were very precise.
It was very like, it was giant, too.
Yes, it was big. Oh, Mount Vernon was probably one of my favorite places that we went to. Because, I mean, other than the whole museum part of it, you wouldn't really know that it was George Washington's house. I mean, you got, they had like a farm with all the animals, and they had like bridges going over creeks, and you could like go down, there's like a house by the lake, and it was just, it was one of the more interactive sites we got to go to. So, that one was really cool.
The National Marine Corps Memorial was very interesting because there were like a bunch of statues that were, they looked very lifelike, almost like you were in the war with them.
We went to that one when it was dark out, too, right?
Uh huh. No, that's the Queen War Memorial.
Oh. The Capitol, when we went inside, the architecture was beautiful. Like, they had, I remember when you went to the furthest layer of the dome, that they'd let you go, you could look up, and they had this gorgeous like mosaic all over the top.
And they had a point, which I thought was really cool. Like, they had a tile that was circular, and like if you stood, then you're like right in the middle of like the whole Capitol. I thought that was really interesting.
The Smithsonian, there were two different ones. There was natural history and science. So, you got to pick which one you wanted to go to. I went to the natural history...
I went to science.
Yeah. But at the history one, I kind of only went because they had one of the pair of Dorothy's slippers in the actual movie. So, that was really cool. And they had so many exhibits, and you couldn't even see everything. But, it was really cool.
And I went to the one of science, and it was just really cool seeing like all of the prehistoric animals and like, it was just really cool to see like who and like what survived on your earth before you did, and like what could possibly survive like after.
The White House, we didn't actually get to go into, but we got to take a lot of pictures outside of it, which was pretty cool.
Yeah, it was very beautiful. Doji's.
Oh, good. The Holocaust Museum was really sad, obviously, but I mean, there was like one where it was set up like a big walkway, and you'd walk through the different rooms that had different exhibits. And I remember one that was, in my opinion, one of the saddest was, you walked through, and you were kind of elevated, and then next to you were all like the shoes and the glasses of the victims that were killed. And it was, there was just so many, and it was really, really...
And one that really like touched me was like, I think there's a picture of like all the hair that they cut off, which I thought was really sad. And it just goes to show like how brutal it was, like for life.
It was very eye...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The, to clarify a few things, one of the reasons that we have the kids, that they have different options for the Smithsonian museums, the Natural, the National History Museum and the Natural History Museum are next to each other. And so, what we do is we park the buses in between, and we have chaperones go to each one, and then the students get a choice. Sometimes when the weather is not as nice, we also go to the Air and Space Museum. We've done that about half the time that we've been down there. This year, we've got, we've got a lot of stuff planned again. We are once again laying a wreath of the Tomb of the Unknowns. What we do every year is we ask the parents, once we get everything organized, if they have any family members interred at Arlington. If they do, we ask them if they would like to have their students lay the wreath there. And we're allowed to have four. And last year, we were lucky, we had four kids, not lucky, but we had four kids who had family interred there, and so they got to lay the wreath. In the past, when we haven't had students, when we haven't had four, we then ask officers from student council to lay the wreath for us. That's, we're doing that on Wednesday. On the Thursday that we're down there, we have at eight, at eight fifty and nine o'clock in the morning, we have tours of the Capitol Building. Once again, Representative Songus's offices helped us get those. In the past, we've gone through and had interns take us, but last year, we actually had the tour guides do it, and it was much better because they had cellular, cellular technology that they use with headsets. And so, you can actually hear in, in the Capitol, when they're trying to say something, and there's thousands of people, it's kind of difficult. I did try and get us, I saw in Sixty Minutes a piece about the Capitol Dome, and apparently you can go up to the top. And I said, hey, can we get up there? And they were like, no, no. You have to have a congressman actually take you up there, and it's a group of four at a time. So, it would take us quite a while. Then we're trying to get a, book our tour for the Pentagon on the Friday. This year, they changed things around, and as they said, that the security to get into the Pentagon is absolutely extraordinary. Last year, some students, it was a little bit of a snafu, their names weren't on the separate, the same piece of paper that hadn't gone alphabetically. And so, finally, we found where they were, and everyone was allowed in. This year, you have to go on, and rather than submitting a spreadsheet with everyone's name and phone number, address, that, everything has to be entered in individually. First name, last name, middle name, social security, everything. And so, for 125 people, it's taken us a while. And you can't make the reservation until you enter the information. So, we're working on that. And then Saturday, once again, we have a reservation for the Holocaust Memorial Museum, which is a really fantastic tie-in in the English curriculum to Anne Frank, which they read during the course of their eighth grade year. And then some of the students read Night at the High School, which is again about the Holocaust. So, it's very, very moving. In between, we'll do things depending on the weather. You know, we might be outside looking at some memorials if it's cloudy or rainy. We'll go into some more Smithsonian's. Last year was the first year, you know, that it was ever cold. Last year was rather cold. And we actually had at one point, duck, when we were waiting for Senator Cowan, that's a picture of us, by the way, meeting Senator Cowan. We ducked into the Library of Congress just to keep warm. And we actually, being rather chivalrous, made all the girls go in first because they're, of course, wearing skirts, and you know, some of them weren't even wearing leggings. So, it was really, really cold. Last year with the White House, we were told that we were going to be admitted to the White House, and then, of course, we had the budget snafu, and they stopped giving tours. When some of the parents and some of the kids in town found out about it, they reached out to their congressman, Representative Songus, in Senator Cowan's office. And they said, well, since you can't do that, how about coming and meeting with us? And so, we were actually able to meet Representative Songus, and then to meet with Representative, Senator Cowan, who was the placeholder for now Senator Markey. So, really, really, you know, very gracious of them. They were able to come out and talk to the kids a bit about government. This year, we're, we're looking forward to another good trip. We're once again staying at the Bolger Center. It's a nice place because it's removed from the city, so it's a little bit safer. The food's really good there, you know, secure rooms. We make sure that the boys and girls are, their floors are segregated. We have chaperones on every floor. This year, we have 114 students going. We have very, very few students not going. And to a student, they're not going because they have, they've been to Washington before. Some of them aren't going because they, like, like many of us, get carsick. And the idea of spending that much time in a bus is just not going to happen. Last year, we were on the bus on the way back for 11 hours because on the way back, it started to snow. And I remember leaning over to the bus driver and asking, how well do these handle in trap, in snow? And he went, not good. And so, we went very, very, very slowly, very safely, but that did add on to a significant amount of time. And that seems to happen with every trip we take, you know. One way down will be fast, and then the way back, there'll, sometimes it's taken us two hours to get from Washington to Baltimore. Sometimes we're hitting debris in the, in the, in the streets and stopping. One final note, this year marks our seventh trip, and I realized when I was doing the math, the current eighth graders were in first grade when we started the trip. So, they are the first sort of group to sweep through. So, I guess I would form, now formally like to ask that, you know, that the school committee vote and choose to allow us to go on our Washington DC trip. It's scheduled for March 12th, leaving Wednesday the 12th, coming back on Saturday the 15th.
Do you guys recommend it, the current eighth graders?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody that'd like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the DC field trip from March 12th to March 15th.
Second.
Any discussion? Just one question, number of chaperones do you suspect?
We have, this year, we've got 13 chaperones going. Yep. We always make sure that we've got at least one for 10. Yep.
Just for the record, I know you handle that well. Thank you.
Last year, when you guys planned, you had the Washington Monument. That was, was it still undergoing repair?
Uh huh. You have to have the scaffolding around it.
Yep. That's gone, but next year, I think it's gonna, this year, it's gonna be the Capitol Building, the roof.
Right.
I'm not sure when they're starting that, but that might...
I believe they've already started some, they're just starting to do the prep work for that. But, yeah, that'll be kind of fascinating to see. Did you see the Sixty Minutes piece?
No, I didn't.
They talked about how the Capitol Building is, it's not made out of, of stone, it's actually made out of cast iron. Because it was easier and lighter, but now it's seeing the wear and tear. So, it's, it's a fascinating building to be in. If you haven't been there, it's really fascinating. And if you are going down, and for anybody, contact your representative or senator, because they can get you tours and, you know, meet and reach, that kind of thing.
Okay, motion made seconded. Discussions had. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. unanimous. Well, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Talk to them before you go.
Sorry?
And thank you all for letting us know how much you enjoyed the trip, and that it was well good for you all.
That was excellent. And I'd also like to thank Mr. Levine for doing what I call those extra things. Taking over 100 students on a trip, overnight trip, isn't an easy feat, and you've done it for a number of years. And I certainly commend you on it. It's a trip that students talk about for a long time after they finish graduating from Wilton High School. I remember fondly some of the bus trips I've taken in my career, and it's, it's interesting how all of a sudden, the bus gets quiet after a while, and then you stop to gas up, and lo and behold, it's noisy for another hour, and then it quiets down again. There seems to be a pattern all the way home. So, again, thank you, Mr. Levine, for all that you do for our students.
Thank you.
Thanks.
The high school history department this year has tweaked or reworked their curriculum. And they're doing more research, but they've created more of a research-oriented course, which is a skill that is certainly required for college readiness. We were able to help them purchase some Chromebooks this year and some software. And as a result, we have with us Mr. Muskinis this, this evening, to give us an update in terms of how well the new equipment and the course is working. So, welcome.
That should advance to the next slide.
You can sit here, you can sit there.
You know, tonight's theme, as the superintendent indicated, is to talk a little about how technology is being implemented in the high school curriculum. I hope tonight I don't end up demonstrating the, you know, my inability to use technology. The, I would, thank you very much for having me here tonight. I understand, just as at every meeting, there's a great deal of work to be done, so I will endeavor to keep this presentation very brief. I'm here mostly to, well, I'm here not only to express appreciation on behalf of the department and of the students for the new technology that's been afforded to us this year, but also just to give a glimpse to you and to the public about how we've used this technology, and also how we plan to use it going forward. As you can see here, we have an image report of students with Chromebooks. I think I'll pause for a moment and say, I know what most of you are thinking, my goodness, not another picture of a student with a computer. I think that, you know, over the, over the past several years, we've seen a lot of images of students with iPads and computers. And while I think most people would be in agreement saying that this is ultimately a good thing, the question that follows is, well, what are they doing with the, with the Chromebooks or the computers? I mean, I think if you look close in the image there, one of the screens actually has Facebook up on it, not really. But, yeah, so, the point of the presentation today is to...
Look at that.
Point of the presentation today, this very crude prezi, is to show the relationship that, between some of the tools we've acquired over the past year, and how they relate to the execution of our core mission. So, you can see here, this, this was summarized from our program of studies. The history and social sciences, the social science department empowers students to act as informed citizens by teaching them to critically engage with evidence to evaluate accounts of the past. That's at the heart, not just of, say, like our history department, but of history education in general. And it's been this way for quite some time. However, in recent years, the new technology has afforded us new opportunities to do this better, do this more efficiently, do this in different ways. So, recently, this past year, through the support of the district and of the Rotary Club, we were able to purchase a class set of 20 Chromebooks, which we've been able to use in history classes. This has been of great help to us because even though certainly there are other computers in the school, in our tech lab, in our library, this makes it so that we have more consistent, regular access to computers, so that we can use technology that, again, we've actually had for a few years, that we can use with more regularity. So, back to the question here. So, what are these students doing? For an example, I've chosen just one of the many things that the department's been able to do this year with the Chromebooks. And that's the incorporation of some Google apps into sort of a classic history project of using a local cemetery to examine change over time. So, just quickly, I think most of us know this now, but Google apps refers to the various applications that are provided to you through a Google account. And all of our students, of course, have Google accounts now. So, Google Docs, Google Presentations. We have been able to use this in a number of different contexts, but just to go... a number of different contexts, but, um, just to go into the cemetery project, here you can see, um, sophomores in our US One class, um, in the old burying ground, um, near the center of the town. Um, as I mentioned earlier, um, this is sort of, sort of a tried and true tradition, um, in history education, especially in New England, um, given the, uh, the abundance of cemeteries. Uh, for many years, we've had students traipsing around, uh, cemeteries, but what we did this time was to try to change the project a little bit so that they would be able to carry out the task, um, by being able to visualize the data and also be able to, uh, collaborate more effectively on carrying out the task. So here, uh, if you look closely, you can see that, um, the students are not only examining the headstones, but, um, what they're also doing is taking pictures of the headstones, taking care to include the, uh, year and the image that is, um, that's on the headstone. What they were doing was collecting information that they could then, um, organize and then interpret to figure out change over time in the, um, in Littleton community in the colonial period. So the following day, um, back in class, again, using the Chromebooks, um, students, uh, created a, uh, Google site onto which they uploaded photographs, um, from the previous day's experience. Um, and after all the photographs have been uploaded, they, um, switched into Teams and they were assigned certain years, um, and they determine how many times, uh, say, for instance, the death's head, like the skull with wings appeared in the 1760s or in the 1780s and the 1790s. Um, together, they also worked on a shared spreadsheet. They input the information into the spreadsheet and the spreadsheet was able to create a visualization of the line graph here. Um, so, using this evidence along with some secondary sources to, to look up more on the meaning of the various symbols on the headstones, they were able to, um, make some reasonable claims about change over time in Littleton. So as this student pointed out, um, uh, studying the old burying ground can help to understand what religion or group influenced Littleton at different, uh, points in time. And so ultimately, uh, Littleton, um, in a very consistent way with other towns during the time period, uh, saw a dramatic change in religious values and beliefs from the end of colonial period to, uh, the beginning of the 19th century. Now, of course, I just could've told students this. Students could've read it in a book and they even could've done this, um, in a similar way without a computer. But what this allowed us to do, um, as I mentioned earlier, was to more easily visualize the information and also too, to work together in a collaborative fashion, uh, to carry out the task. So, it's about doing the same thing we've done for quite some time, but doing it in a, in a better and more efficient way. In a similar vein, we've also been afforded increased access to, um, to databases this year, um, giving our students, uh, more opportunity to look at secondary and primary sources. Uh, as was mentioned at the beginning, um, the department has been, uh, focusing a great deal on research of late, so, um, over the summer, we put together a research guide that's meant to help our students in all of our core classes create research projects. Uh, and I'll be frank, most of the information in this guide we put together, like this page we have here, um, is not new. It's pretty old information, um, how to deal with evidence and answering historical questions like this particular slide shows. But one of the problems that we encountered was, uh, especially for our students who have had, um, challenges in the past with, um, accessing, um, primary source material, how do we, uh, how do we guide them in acquiring information in a way that's appropriate for their skill level, for, um, for where they are as students? So, um, we were lucky to, or we are lucky to now have access to a variety of databases from ABC Cleo. Um, I should acknowledge at this point before I go into what the databases are, that, uh, we had a great deal of help from Dr. Jemian in, um, in acquiring these databases. Um, I think initially we had asked for two and she managed to get the vendor to give us four for about, I think, half the price, so, leading me to believe that when I buy a car next, I might be calling, um, Dr. Jemian for some pointers. Um, but yeah, these databases, um, they give us access to a lot of secondary and primary material, but more importantly, these materials are excerpted, adapted, curated in such a way that even for students who might be kind of daunted by this sort of task, um, it's, uh, the information is, um, essentially presented in such a way that they can meet at their level and then advance. Uh, additionally, uh, besides, uh, these databases, we've been able to use the Chromebooks to access other databases like, uh, this database about colonial slavery. This is used by Susan Harvey in her US One course. All of the information on this database, uh, about the names of ships, who owned ships, uh, how many slaves were on a certain voyage, where they went, where they came from, none of this information is new, but had essentially been held captive in dusty archives for many, many years. Now, um, students can access this information, information that, I mean, given 10 years ago, most students would not have been able to, uh, be privy to. And to, instead of just reading in a textbook like, "Here's an interpretation of slavery", they can draw their own conclusions about it, they can engage in authentic inquiry, um, because they have the raw materials that historians themselves will work with. So, um, again, not to hammer a point home too hard, but, the point here is that, um, we've been very lucky to have these new tools, the Chromebooks, the Google apps, um, increased access to databases. But ultimately, what they've really been able to help us do is to carry out our core mission, um, of preparing students for citizenship by helping them to scrutinize the stories that we tell about the past and ultimately about ourselves. Uh, going forward, uh, the history department is very excited to be, to be exploring what have been termed the digital humanities, uh, new online tools that, uh, look at, or that help us with, um, text analysis, with spatial analysis, with, uh, um, the visualization of data. Um, but again, we're confident this will help students be prepared for political discourse in the future. So with that being said, I just wanted to thank, um, everyone who has provided us and our students with support over the past year, um, with this new technology and also to thank you for having me here this evening. Uh, if anyone has any questions at this point or comments, I'd be happy to take them.
No, just a comment. I mean, I, I really appreciate having the additional insight in terms of how we're using the technology investments of the, uh, district and that they're not just computers in a classroom, they're, they're integrated into the whole learning experience, uh, both from the usage as well as, as, as tools there. And just continue to look forward to us as the next crop that's already been indoctrinated is already perhaps even ahead of where, you know, we are just starting to introduce some of this in some of the other grades. Thank you very much for the, for the presentation.
Yes?
Yeah, I think this is a great tool for students to use and I also think it's another example. Uh, first, we just saw the presentation from the Washington DC trip where students are going and learning hands-on and that's one, one thing we're able to do. It's not always, uh, best to learn from a textbook and it shows that we're trying to, to make sure that learning is hands-on as much as possible. And also that students are accessing those databases and able to sort of get a grasp of that information is so important because when they want to do their own research that's maybe not in a textbook somewhere, they're gonna have to know how to do that. They're gonna have to know how to do their own research and, uh, I think this is a great tool we're, we're giving to them. So, thank you.
I just echo the same thought, Mr. Munster.
Yeah, because everything on the internet is true.
Right. That's what we teach them.
That's right. And here comes my French date, right? How do you help the kids understand though, well, the databases are good and there's certainly reputable sources, we know that, um, and balancing with primary sources?
So, in the sense of, um, like, how do, how do evaluate information they come across online as opposed to the information they would come across in, say, like a curated database?
But then also, well, let's go, maybe I'm being the, uh, the end of all here in this thought process, but sometimes the, um, primary sources are still what we need to be looking at. A database is somebody copying, um, and certainly scanned copies of, you know, letters of, person just used as an example, certainly, uh, works well as a primary source of sorts. But how are you helping the kids understand that, Don Hill? That, uh, everything is not right there on the Chromebook, um, that there, there's gonna be cases where they have, have to go to a library, they have to go to a repository, you know, whether it's Library of Congress or pick anything, uh, to do their research.
I guess, um, just two quick responses to that. So, um, in certain cases, we've been able to, um, bring students to, I guess, to the, how to put it, the primary, primary source, like, rather than the primary sources represented on the, on a database. So for instance, with the cemetery, but in other instances as well. Uh, but I think in a more, um, on a more fundamental level, I think that one of the ways that students should be different as a result of having gone through, like, a successful history education, is to just be critical of the information in general. So the sense that's seeing like, "Well, it's on a database, it must be true." Um, even though they can have a different level of trust per se, with, say, someone out of UC Cleo than something they find at, you know, blah, 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 dot biz. Nonetheless, remember that, uh, information is still subjective point of view and also to, um, to tampering ultimately.
I think the other thing to keep in mind too, what, the great thing that I think about when I think about technology being used in a humanities classroom rather than, I think we would sometimes almost reflexively think, "Well, why?", you know? The obvious answer would be in a, you know, a, uh, STEM type of classroom, is that rather than be stuck with a book or a couple of textbooks or one library's worth of information that might be limited by definition, the opportunity to, it's so much easier to see different viewpoints now and to come across them, that I would think it would be almost impossible not to question because you're gonna get two sides to every story so much quicker. Now you're gonna get six sides and then you're gonna have to discern, "Well, where's the consensus? Where do I, where, where's the outlier?" And I say, "Wait a minute, that's so far out of line that it can't possibly be true." You know, I could probably dismiss that one out of hand. I think they become more critical by virtue of having access to it. Um, that's the way I think about it, but I find my, that's helped me, uh, is that even when I use it in my own day-to-day life to think like that.
And that's partially why the department really has moved towards, uh, a, um, a research curriculum which, um, every student has access to because, yeah, now the problem is not too little information, the problem is too much information. And how does one sift through that? So...
And that's certainly a contemporary problem, not just while students are in school, but certainly when they're reading the news or watching TV or whatever it is, it's sifting through all of that information, that's the problem.
Yeah.
So, Bill, thank you. Anybody else have anything?
I'll just, you know, thank you, Mr. Muskinis, for, uh, you know, bringing this to us this evening and, and research, as we all know, is a, is a key skill for our students as they, uh, leave high school and continue their education. We've had some good conversation this evening about, uh, resource acquisition and what that actually means. And another skill set, and it's really a process rather than a skill set, our students need to be able to decipher in regard to what's genuine and what's not. It's also important to identify whether the author is credible or not. And sometimes you even have to go one step further and see what organization that author actually belongs to. It's, you know, it's really, it's fascinating when you start getting into research and you really start digging down into, to where these articles come from. But it is a skill that our students need, it's a critical thinking skill. And, uh, we're not only doing it at high school, but we're, we're starting at an earlier age, even at Russell Street School, that process is starting. So, again, thank you, Bill, and thank you for your vision and creativity.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. You gonna speak to us about MCAS foot scores?
So, the next, uh, item on the agenda, you've, you've had a while to look at this and, uh, I found it quite intriguing. Uh, it certainly parallels with the other conversations that we've had this evening. One of our goals throughout the district this year is meeting the needs of diverse learners. Uh, this evening though, we're, we're gonna focus our attention on our students that scored advanced, in the advanced category on our MCAS exam. And that was during the, uh, last administration. So, we have one year of data, didn't want to make it too convoluted, wanted to keep it as linear as possible this evening. Uh, as we go on though, we'll, we'll be building databases and, and this is just one group of students. So we've had a lot of conversations the last three years about, uh, meeting the needs of all children. And this is one area, here, one group of students that we haven't actually talked about a lot. For me, this gave me some, some baseline data, some basic evidence to look at in terms of how our students compare with other students that actually are in the same academic cohort. And what I mean by that is that if a student received a certain score on an MCAS exam, students from throughout the entire state with that score are compared with two years of data and then we determine the growth pattern in relation to the two years of data that we have. So, when we look at student growth percentiles, we're looking at students that are academically similar. And when, the higher the growth percentile, the more distinguished they are from, from their academic peers. I circulated a, uh, video the other night for you to look at, just to refresh, uh, your, uh, diet or your knowledge base more correctly, uh, on SGP's. We use a lot of acronyms, as you know, and, and SGP's, uh, have been gaining momentum within this state. This is one of the, the many things that Massachusetts, I feel, has done very well, to have the opportunity to look at student SGP's as they, uh, move up through a school district, gives us a lot of good information. It also, not only information that's used for our student, but information that can be used to assess our curricula, the assessment strategies and our instructional strategies as well. Now, I know we have a heavy agenda this evening, so I, I don't want to be too long-winded, so, I'm gonna go right into the data. And in conjunction with the school committee goal to, uh, circulate information prior to the meeting, we've kind of designed this meeting along that line. So our next presentation, when Dr. Harrington's going to, uh, present the NEASK findings, he's gonna talk about 10 or 15 minutes and then give you an opportunity to tease out some of, of the questions you may have in the report. Although I must say, the report was concise and very well organized, so I would anticipate that a lot of your questions, uh, may be, uh, answered already as a result of the, uh, design of the report. Our grade threes, we're, we're looking at Russell Street School first of all. We don't have any, uh, SGP data for them because, uh, this is the first year that they've written the MCAS exam. But even so, we thought it was worthy of, of, of taking a look at baseline data. We had 17% of the class, uh, perform in the advanced range in ELA or English Language Arts and 44% uh, performed the advanced range in mathematics. Grade four gave us one year of data and it's interesting that on the website, it says they use two years of data, but there are always exceptions and grade four obviously is the exception. Uh, we had 16% of the grade four class, uh, achieve advanced proficiency in ELA. Now, when we look at that in a little more detail, uh, when I look at, uh, SGP's of 60% and above, that, that involves 19 students. Now, we had 20 students that were advanced in the advanced category, 19 of them were in the 60th percentile beyond. What does that mean? Well, if we start at the top, we had nine students that scored, uh, or their growth scores were higher than 90 to 100% of their academic peers. That's pretty impressive. That's pretty high growth. Remember they're compared to students with the same academic, uh, demonstration or, or abilities that they've shown in previous grades. We look at, uh, 80 to 89, eight of 20 students, 70 to 79, two. And, uh, when we look at SGP's and, and really try to tease out what's meaningful, I've always used 50% as a baseline and then we go up from there and at the end, we'll, we'll talk a little bit about what that means. We go over to, uh, mathematics, 40, 44% of our grade threes scored in the advanced proficiency We look at, uh, our grade four math class, 26% scored in the advanced range. Uh, six students, uh, were between 90 and 100%. Again, if I look at the 60 and above or the SGP, uh, percentiles, 27 out of 33 students were in that range. Again, indicative that our, our students that are, are, uh, advanced in, in terms of, uh, mastery of material are truly being challenged using this set of data as one variable. We go down to grade five math, uh, 33% of our students, uh, scored advanced. We look at the, uh, data in more detail, eight out of 48 scored, uh, between 90 and 100. And if I go from 60 above, 25 out of the 48 students, uh, had SGP's of 60 or above. Summary, 98% of our advanced ELA students demonstrated an SGP of 50% or better and again, that's the baseline cutoff that we use. 80% of advanced math students demonstrated an SGP of 50% or better. 20% of the, the students in ELA were placed in the advanced category and 33% of the students in math were placed in the advanced category and that's just a, a three-grade average. We go on to the middle school. Looking at our grade eights in ELA first of all, 28% of the class scored in the advanced category. We look at the detailed data, six students were in the 90 to 100% range. If I go from 60% and above, 22 out of 37 students were in that cohort. We go down and stay with ELA, grade seven, 22% of our students were identified in the advanced category. 11 out of 26 students scored between 90 and 100 on SGP's. If we go 60 and above, 20 out of 26 students were with, had SGP's 60 and above. Grade six, 28% of the class scored in advanced category. 19 students had SGP's of 60 or higher. Six students between 90 and 100. We go over to mathematics, grade eight, 37% of the class were in the advanced category, achieved, or achievement was in the advanced category. 15 out of 49 had an SGP of 90 to 100. 60 and above, 39 students had scores of 60 and above out of 49. Grade seven, 29% of our students were in the advanced category. 11 out of 33 students were, had SGP's of 90 to 100. 60 and above for SGP, 28 out of 33 students. That's a pretty impressive, impressive number. We look at grade six, 20% of our students scored in the advanced proficiency range. One student out of 25 was between 90 and 100. Eight students scored above 60 with their SGP. Overall summary of the three grades, 81% of advanced ELA students demonstrated an SGP of 50% or greater. 75% of advanced math students demonstrated an SGP of 50% or better. 24% of the students in ELA were placed in the advanced category, and 29% of the students in math were placed in the advanced category. Littleton High School offers two MCAS subjects. 73% of students who wrote our ELA, or wrote the MCAS ELA exam were in the advanced category. 51 out of 71 students had an SGP of 60 or higher. 14 out of 71 had an SGP of 90 to 100. We take a look at math, 70% of our students were in the advanced proficiency range. 19 out of 70 students were in the SGP range of 90 to 100, and 16 were between 80 and 89. Summary, 82% of the advanced ELA students demonstrated an SGP of 50% or better. 76% of the advanced math students demonstrated an SGP of 50% or better, and 73% of the students in ELA were placed in the advanced category. 70% of the students in math, again, were placed in the advanced category. This data certainly is an indication that we are challenging our students, our students that are scoring well in our classes. And there is a correlation between how they perform on the MCAS exam and how they perform with our own internal assessments. Until now, we didn't have this kind of data organized in this fashion. And so there was always a question in terms of what kinds of skills were our teachers utilizing in terms of pedagogy to ensure that their teaching methodology was broad enough to touch all students. And this is a clear indication that we are successfully reaching those students and challenging them with a rigorous curriculum. There are many other variables that we look at. What I liked about this is the comparison between geographically similar students in terms of their academic cohort. Questions?
Any questions?
No, just a comment. You know, I appreciate the, you know, that we're delving into the SGP analysis here because I think it provides that second part for the parents also to understand the two elements of the scores that they see, the pieces there, and how to understand, you know, see what's happening, even though, you know, because the year-to-year individual score doesn't necessarily mean as much as in terms of how's that child doing relative to where the group that they were with last year is doing there. And I think as we look at it, and I think the video that you sent, and I think we make sure we'll include that in the minutes there, that explained the SGP process there. But the fact that it's also based on your peers, so even though the scores may be different, you can see a child that's performing at this level, is he keeping up with peers? Did he fall behind or is he keeping up with the peer group even if it's not a high performer there? And, you know, so it provides, I think, a little bit more insight for the parents. And then us bringing that into our analysis, I think, is an important step. So I really appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, I would say that Darryl's exactly right in enough so that this is compelling information that I think as a committee and as a admin team, if we can find a way to integrate this and push it, the message farther out beyond this particular forum, not just on a one-time basis. Obviously, I think this is, you said, Kelly, that this is like, we haven't had this information in this particular way, but being able to present it. Now that we have, this should be a jumping off point, and this should be a constant point of reference that we circle back towards, both individually for students, but also collectively as a district, and as the buildings, the grades, and the teaching staffs, and the teams, et cetera, et cetera. I think it can inform us quite a bit, and it can also inform the parents and the community in terms of, you know, when you see a number like an MCAS score or a grade out of context, it can have dubious value and dubious meaning, again, multiple meanings. I think this gives a long way towards qualifying on a more relative basis what those, what that information can mean to the kids, each kid individually.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, because it addresses the specific concern we did have as to the kids who are doing well. How do we know that they're continuing to improve over what they were doing previously? So encapsulating the information this way is excellent. And Darryl said, including in the minutes, but make sure we've got this YouTube video linked, if you would please.
We can certainly.
And maybe a short little intro from you on the website as to why it's important and what the video is trying to tell us. And videos will have four minutes and a couple of seconds or so, so it's a quick spin through it. It does do, I think, a pretty good job of explaining SGP to the layperson. I mean, you all know it, I've been exposed to it. We certainly heard it many times here on the committee. But I think it'd be good for the community at large to see that.
Thank you. And what's fascinating to me is sometimes our data, due to the size of our population, is, one has to be cautious and use years of data to draw conclusions. But because the database is so large, and the entire state, this does really truly give us some good data to look at. Final comment I have is, please remember when you're looking at classroom SGP's that they're using mediums, which is an interesting approach to calculating an average SGP. And that's something that we're going to look at as the mid-group as we move forward. What would our SGP's look like if we used different arithmetic means, et cetera? So we're intrigued by this, and we're still learning a bit ourselves because we've had some conversations about our advanced proficiency students and, you know, where we thought they would be within the state. And we were, we were very pleased when we started doing this analysis and actually seeing our results. So, thank you. Our next presentation this evening is from Dr. Harrington. He'll talk about the NEASK report. And Dr. Harrington, we'll be talking about 10, or for 10 to 15 minutes, and then open it up for questions. It's a great evening of Covey's Quadrant II activities at the Board. Everybody knows he's my hero.
Good evening, everyone. I have a few things to present to you tonight, along with our summary of slides about the NEASK report. Assistant Principal, Mrs. Cheryl Temple, joins me tonight and will present. But before we get started, I just want to also distribute hard copies of the report that you received via PDF. Thank you. As a member of the school committee. And also, this is a press release. I was normally interested in this, but this is a press release that will be going on to point out the papers that we read today. I'll pass this down. Do you want one?
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Now, when we refer to expectations, we talk about our school's mission statement. We also talk about academic expectations, social and civic expectations. I wanted you to have those in front of you so you can understand what we're talking about, when those are referenced throughout the report. So I've prepared copies of our school profile, and you can reference this. It's on the back of the school profile. So this is just for your reference. So to get started, and then I'll turn it over to Cheryl. Now, you have good news to report to you tonight, as you know. And that is accreditation success. That should be the headline in the Lowell Sun. LHS had accreditation success. We received official notification after part of a three-year process, three-year journey of preparation through self-study, through extensive committee meetings involving parents and faculty and students. It all came together, and we're pleased to announce that. And Cheryl's going to recap a little bit about our journey for you tonight, and then we'll go into some commendations that NEASK also cited throughout the report. There were lots and lots of commendations for the high school, and it's really a positive reflection of the community and the investment of the community and the whole public school system, really. Pre-K to 12, we talk about that all the time. And the high school is the culmination of that journey, and there's no doubt that our success is a team effort. It really was. My fellow administrators came out, and that doesn't always happen in every accreditation visit, but my fellow, my colleagues came out and represented the school district quite well and talked positively about the high school. It really was a combined effort and a combined success, so I'm happy to announce that tonight. And without further ado, I'll turn it over to Cheryl.
So our charge from NEASK was to review the seven standards that are listed here. And as Dr. Harrington said, this was a three-year process for us. Each one of the standards had a certain amount of indicators with them. So the core values, beliefs, and learning expectations had four indicators. The curriculum had seven indicators. Instruction had five indicators. Assessment had 11 indicators. School culture and leadership had 12 indicators. School resources had seven indicators, and the community resources had eight indicators. So as we went through, as we start, we started our journey in the fall of 2011 by reexamining and revising the school core values, beliefs, and learning expectations document that we had at the high school. And this was done in a process as a staff, through a course of staff meetings. There was many revisions and conversations and wordsmithing that went along with changing that document. And in January 2012, we revised, the revised core values, beliefs, and learning expectations statement was approved by the faculty. In the winter of 2012, we conducted the Endicott College Self-Study Opinion Survey. The survey included participants, staff, students, and parents. And the information that we got from that survey was used as information in part of the researching of all of the standards as we moved forward. And we investigated the standards in two different phases. For our school to investigate seven different standards with the number of teachers that we had, we had to do this in two phases, so we had enough people to be on all of the committees. So in fact, each committee had a chairperson or co-chairs, and staff members, students, and parents involved on each committee. And we realized early on that that was going to be a challenge for us because every one of our staff members had to be on multiple committees, and we didn't want multiple committees running at the same time. So everyone was on a committee in Phase One, and then everyone was on a committee again in Phase Two. And we had a lot of students involved in the committees and parents as well. So our Phase One, we worked on core values, school resources, and community resources. Those committees collected and analyzed evidence and completed the self-study reports. So for an example, this was our document for the self-stud, this was our self-study guide for core values. And inside this packet explains exactly what we need to do to first understand the standard, to collect data for each one of the indicators, to analyze that data and draw conclusions and provide supporting details. All of this information is being saved, hard copies of things in bins. We then had to write our narrative and then write our executive summary. And eventually, all of those summaries went together to be our NEASK document. But everything hard copied had to be saved in bins. For when the team came to visit, they could literally go in and see the documents that we were referring to. So we had plastic bins, all stored in all the classrooms and in the library, and we were literally collecting the documents. In the next phase, Phase Two of our journey, oh, I'm sorry, let me back up. So the first three standards were completed, and our reports were written. And in May of 2012, those Phase One reports were approved by our faculty. Phase Two was the curriculum, instruction, assessment, and school culture and leadership committees. Again, they collected the information and analyzed the data and wrote the self-study reports. In December of 2012, the Phase Two reports were approved by the faculty, and everyone sort of took a deep breath at that point that we were done. And we actually weren't done. We realized that we had a lot of work to do. One of the things that came up, it turned out to be almost a bad word as we went through, is we kept hearing about rubrics, rubrics, as we went through all the standards. And we realized from the onset that that was something that we really had to be working on. And so when we were finished in December with approving the reports, we sort of said, should we be working on these rubrics, knowing people were really sort of hanging by a thread at that point. And I credit Sarah Bertolinger with coming up with a great idea, a fairly simple idea, to make some very user-friendly, usable rubrics. And I remember some shaky meetings altogether deciding what we were going to do. And we said, let's just meet together one more time and see if everyone can work together to do this. And with big smiles on our faces, we introduced it. And I was, I not had a moment where I was more proud of our staff was that day because they finished the entire charge in 60 minutes, as we had challenged them to do, and they did it. So it was fantastic. So it was a full staff initiative to write these user-friendly rubrics that could be used right away. And we were able to approve those rubrics pretty quickly, and people have been using them since. So that's fantastic. So the culmination of all of our work was in May for the four days when the evaluating team of 16 people came to the high school to do their evaluation. So the visiting committee, like I said, was 16 people, and they came to the high school in May. Over their four days, they, as a team, reviewed all of our self-study materials that I spoke of earlier. They spent 40 hours over those days shadowing 16 students for half-days. They had a total of 64 hours doing classroom observations, in addition to the time they were shadowing students. They had numerous informal observations in and around the school. They had tours of the facility. They had individual meetings with 28 teachers about their work, their instructional approaches, and their assessments of student learning. They had group meetings with students, parents, school district administrators, and teachers. And they did an examination of student work, including a selection of work that was collected by the teachers at the high school. Those were in exciting four days that they were with us. And then it, so, you know, they, we had to create schedules for them to visit with students and give tours and all of that. But we tried to have the days go on as normally as they ordinarily would with 16 visitors with us. And then on Wednesday afternoon, they gave a, just a brief sort of exiting report for us, and they went off, and we waited. So in October, the 27th and 28th, the committee on public secondary schools reviewed our evaluation report, and they voted to award Littleton High School continued accreditation, which we were obviously very happy about. And just several weeks ago, on December 30th, we received official notification of a continued accreditation for the high school. So we are very happy to get that. The next few slides I'll go through quickly is just to share with you some of the NEASK commendations that we are very proud of. So they recognized the efforts of the leadership team and faculty to identify core values, beliefs, and learning expectations at the high school. The visibility of evidence and core values in the building and in school culture. They noted the culture of respect in our school. They noted mapping and articulation of our curriculum, significant professional development time and resources, and also the collegiality that they were able to witness in our building in their visits. The commitment of the administrators, teachers, and staff to personalize instruction for students, highly qualified and knowledgeable staff. They commended us for data analysis of annual standardized test results. They saw strong and evident school pride in students, staff, and parents. They noted our teacher mentoring, and also the commitment and collaboration among student support personnel to meet student needs. support personnel to meet student needs. In addition, they noted the positive roles of the principal, the assistant principal, and staff in creating a school community that personalizes learning, demonstrates tremendous school pride, and supports and builds meaningful relationships with students. And they noted opportunities for students to exercise initiative and leadership. They also noted our library media center, our parent volunteers, and the daily upkeep and cleanliness of our building. And finally, they commended us for the welcoming nature of our school, the efforts to actively engage parents and families as partners in each student's education, and the dependable funding provided by the community and the district's governing body. Now, hand it over to John for the following steps.
Thank you very much. And Cheryl's absolutely right. At one point, we had coined a phrase in our building and it was "NIESC fatigue." As we were going through this journey, there was definitely some exhaustion towards the end. And what a relief, what a round of applause on that Wednesday in May when the visitors or the inspectors had sort of completed their evaluation. We had a good feeling from the chair and from the members of the evaluation team that at that point, things had gone pretty well and we just awaited official word. So here we are. The thing we do know, we need to report out, there's no question that they provide recommendations and you could see that in the report. It's not uncommon that there'll be a follow-up report requested by, of a school within a year, and we have just that. And the follow-up report that we have to make has to do with the development and submission of rubrics, wouldn't you know? And it has to do with the social and civic expectations. We're very confident that we're moving right along with that process. That process is underway, the development of those rubrics. The expectations related to, the social expectations are things like respect and understanding diversity and different perspectives, becoming active participants in the school community. If you know anything about Littleton High School, that won't be very difficult for us to assess. We have students who do a great job of being active participants in the school community. And I think Bill did a good job of demonstrating how we respect and understand different perspectives and the ways we go about doing that, just in the social science and history department. So we're confident of being able to measure that. We also have to assess civic expectations related to understanding the rights and responsibilities of citizenship and making positive contributions through community service and civic participation. And like I said, that effort is already underway and come October, we'll be able to send them the documentation that's necessary for NIESC. We also have to describe the progress made to implement the school-wide analytic rubrics for academic expectations. We had just approved those rubrics a few months prior to their arrival and they knew that. We reported all of that right when they arrived in our first meeting. We knew what we had to do, what they were going to cite us for in terms of recommendations. And pretty much all the things that we identified and reported out to them upon their arrival on May 5th, that Sunday afternoon, were in the report as recommendations. We had done a thorough self-assessment and there were really no surprises. And that's always a wonderful thing, when you get a document of, you know, 90 to 100-page document from a group of evaluators and they pretty much report back to you with the things you already identified that you needed to work on and improve on as an institution. Moving forward, slide, it really shouldn't say, this slide shouldn't be headed, the header shouldn't be the focus of the school's mission and expectations, it should be more like focal points. We, I'm happy to announce or let you know tonight that the report and the visiting team really did validate and confirm for us a lot of the things that we espouse and we talk about in our mission statement, the things we want to pursue as a school. They talked about, you know, this clearly comes across that there's a pursuit of excellence at the high school. It clearly comes across that we try to develop student potential. And we provide a safe, caring, supportive, and academically challenging learning community. That's something we strive for. And that came across. Other focal points that were cited in the visit were the cultivation and modeling of respect, our core values, responsibility, integrity, accountability, perseverance, and teamwork. Do we strive for this? Do we hit the mark every time? Are there areas for growth? There's no question there are, but we strive to live by these values. And we also strive to develop students' 21st century skills and have that be an active part of our instruction. And that's often summarized by the four Cs that you hear about a lot when you read about 21st century curriculum. Critical thinking, collaboration, creativity, and communication. I think in Bill's brief presentation tonight, we saw all those things happening with that Chromebook initiative. Critical thinking, collaboration, creativity, and active communication, presentations in different formats by students. And of course, we strive for community connections and service. That's fundamental to who we are as a school community and I think that comes across when you look at the report. And lastly, just to wrap up before we go to questions, I want to thank each and every one of you. Our superintendent of schools, Mr. Clinchy, the steering committee members, Cecily Houston, Sarah Buerlenger, and of course Cheryl Temple, who were instrumental in the leadership of this process through the years. The teachers, the parents, the students who served on all the standards committees over the long process, and of course, our community for their investment and continued support of our schools. That's what makes an accreditation visit go so well. And so that about wraps it up for tonight, as far as the formal presentation, and I'm happy to turn it over for questions.
Cheryl, you want to add anything before questions?
Just a few points. When a high school goes through a reaccreditation process, it certainly takes a lot of wear and tear on staff. It's an intensive process. People, teachers, by nature, want to do the best that they can do and they have 16 people traipsing around the school for a week, uncovering every rock. It is quite daunting. But I have to tell you, when I was in the school during that week, the morale was high and they were ready. They were ready for those 16 people to come through the school and they were anxious to talk about the high school and what we represent and what we stand for. So I'd like to thank the staff for diligently working on the self-study and also working with the team when they were out there during that week. There are a number of recommendations that are in the report. That's not atypical, having served a leadership position with NIESC and evaluating schools. That's their job, is to take out commendations, but at the same time, help schools become better. So an expectation is that they have recommendations.
He wants to start with questions or comments.
I'd like to jump right in because that's, please, regular question I had. You know, obviously, in the report, there are no glaring areas of weakness or shortcomings cited and there were a lot of positive aspects that were cited. But there were comments and suggestions in terms of improving instruction and programming. What's the plan or process for, because there's a handful, more than a handful. So what's the process and the plan for prioritizing them in, you know, evaluating the potential impact of one suggestion versus another versus the resources that would be required to implement one versus another in terms of time, effort, money, staffing, you know, that type of thing?
We've already formed a follow-up committee that's required. And that's part of the process after everyone goes through their evaluation. And what we'll do is we will do just what you said, which is prioritize the recommendations. The first and foremost one we have to respond to are the two things that we know we're going to be prepared for, which is next October. We have to hit that mark in terms of reporting back to them in October 2014 where we're at with rubrics, the social and civic expectations, as well as how we're progressing with measuring student performance and the academic expectations. That's the first thing we need to report back to the NIESC organization. The next thing we need to do, work on, which, there's a two-year report, this is a 10-year process. It's for every high school, every school that goes through this. And the two-year report that is noted there, noted in our letter from the director, is something that's common for every school. Every school is required to submit a two-year follow-up progress report, which we will do in October of 2015. And we will, they have, it's a very formalized, structured review. They, it's very prescriptive from NIESC. We're supposed to comment on where we're at with each of the recommendations and the highlighted ones and whether we accept them, whether we completed them. We can even reject them and say that we, we just have to provide a rationale. Because remember, they say they're recommendations. And the other thing that they are, there may be some things that we decide not to act on because at the time, this is the thing, how things are flexible and fluid. Maybe now or a year ago, when we identified this need, it was a really relevant thing we thought we needed. But based on changes between when the self-study was done and 2015, where we're at then, we may say, we took no action because we actually don't feel we need to do that based on different, and we provide a rationale. So that's all part of this prescriptive process of follow-up from NIESC. There's no doubt that the rubrics will be a big thing for them, it always is, how we're assessing student learning and the things we say we measure, the things we want students to learn, that's all laid out in the back of our student profile, our school profile. We need to clearly, I expect that we'll need to develop a plan to individually measure those for each students and that's actually underway. And then we'll need to report out in aggregate form to parents at some point later down the road. That could be five years out about how we're doing with measuring student learning with those expectations and in reporting press on a report card. Schools are, you know, NIESC has come under some criticism as of late. It's been by public schools because of all the different initiatives, both mandated from the federal government as well as the state government. Now we have another group that we're beholden to and they're in the process of potentially revising some of their processes. We did, Superintendent, Branko and I were at a meeting just the other day and yesterday, as a matter of fact, and there was a lot of talk among superintendents and principals about how NIESC might change its standards or its whole process in some, not the whole process, but part of it. So we're going to have to be responsive to that as well. The thing we, the short of it is that we had to come up with a two- and five-year targeted plan. We had to say things that we would work on for two years and then things we'll work on in five years and that's how we'll proceed.
Great. Bill?
I'd like to get down there. I did not yet, other. Nope.
Sure. So as Kelly said, this is a monumental undertaking going through
Yes.
the reaccreditation process. And I know, you and I have had conversations about NIESC probably getting back four years ago or so. So it's been something that, you know, we've been prepping for and certainly thank the staff and everyone who was involved, the community, yourself, Mrs. Temple here, everyone who was involved in this. Because I do think, I'm sure many experienced NIESC fatigue, hope that now they can experience that rare NIESC joy, if there really is such a thing. Maybe it's relief, I don't know. Yeah, and as you said, there's a lot of, going through the report, I saw there was a lot of positives. Personalized learning, that's something that we are very proud of. And so it's reaffirming for us to see that NIESC, you know, recognized that success that we have in our building. And that's because we have a small intimate setting where we can speak to student needs. Mike got to a lot of my concerns about so many recommendations that we want to work on. And reading them from my perspective, they all seem like valid recommendations for us to work on. But again, it's another massive undertaking and I'm glad that there is a follow-up committee formed. I am a little concerned about the NIESC fatigue for those individuals, but I'm sure they will rise to the occasion. And some of the recommendations that NIESC had are more critical comments, were focused around professional development and how so much of our time recently has been spent on preparing the staff for state mandated programs. So that's sort of something, you know, I'm sure we want to work on, but this, as you said, we're beholden to three different organizations here, the state government, the federal government, and NIESC, and then hopefully, you know, ourselves as well. But there's so much, so much going on in education today and I believe that many of those initiatives will be a positive. But as we've said over the course of this past year, it's that transition that can be pretty complicated, especially when you change everything at once. You've already talked about rubrics, so I'm going to skip that part. 21st century learning expectations you spoke to as well. Those are something I think that are a very valuable part of our learning system, our learning expectations, and certainly what we want our students to have once they graduate and move on into society. How to measure that, of course, is always the hard part. And certainly, that's something that I'm sure there'll be a lot of hard work and thought going into. Some of the issues we've talked about over and over again, the schedule, there's a bell schedule committee looking at that, not just for how to maximize student learning time to avoid distractions, how to maximize student health, but also to make room for teacher collaboration, which was another issue that NIESC brought up. So I'm hopeful, I'm hopeful that a lot of these recommendations can sort of pair up with one another. In an effort to expand the amount of time that teachers have to collaborate with one another, we will change our bell schedule or we will look into changing our bell schedule and that could in and of itself also affect the way we maximize student learning time. So there's a lot of room for improvement there, but also room for partnering these efforts to one another. I guess my only real questions are, where are we going to, how do we, as a school committee, plan to this and how can we help as you go through this?
Thanks for asking. There are, a lot of the recommendations are already built into our school improvement plan. We knew this, we identified them over a year ago, we put them right into our school improvement plan. And we'll continue to do that based on, like I said, there were no surprises here. The two things from a resource standpoint, if I were to let you know about to sort of plan for, are things you already know. And they cited in the report in terms of developing and implementing a long-range technology plan. There's not a school committee meeting where we're not talking about some type of investment in technology and improvement at all the buildings, while the high school's no different. So that's something that we'll see over the next five to 10 years, significant requests for investment in technology and resources for it to make that possible. And then the other piece, and I'll leave you with this, is the school counseling department. There's been, I think you spoke about this at one of the prior school committee meetings about the need for, continued need for mental health services in schools across the state. And we're no different. The middle school has, all the buildings have issues going on with student mental health or emotional health and well-being. And so what we'd like is part of not only our career and college planning, but also from a mental and emotional well-being for our students, we'd like to ask at some point for additional resources for the counseling department.
Thank you for bringing that up. I was going to
Yeah, those are the two things, really, resources.
Yeah, they were pretty clear there and there's not, you know, our budgets are tight. You certainly know this, your staff certainly knows this, having gone through that, these tough, tough budget years. But the report does say we need to, you know, review our staffing levels in our guidance department and make sure that we have sufficient services. And you see it every day, I've seen it in that building, our guidance staff are everywhere.
They're stretched, yeah.
They're, yeah, they're really putting in a lot of great work. And so surely, when we go back and thank our staff for being able to go through NIESC, it's one more thing on top of already a heavy workload for many of our staff members. So I'm very grateful for that. I'm sure the school committee is very grateful for that and the town as well. So please pass it along.
Sure will. Thank you.
No, I found the report very balanced, you know, and I appreciate that, you know, a lot of what you identified as your own self-analysis was reflected in the things, there was no glaring surprises, nothing popped out there, which I, you know, compliment you on your own self-reflection and putting your own inputs into the process there. You know, and I just had a couple, one comment, you know, it hits on some of our new activities, which has been the curriculum mapping and, you know, it's not fully integrated into the whole process through the staff yet. So, you know, gives us good indicators of where we're at with our initiatives here and where we still have to go with it there. Maybe, I didn't shoot a note off before, there was a reference to an Endicott survey, which I think it must have been like a teacher sentiment survey?
Yeah.
And here, could you maybe elaborate a little bit more on what is that survey and what type of information do we get from it? And is it something that we do often?
Because in the early stages of the self-study, it's required by NIESC. They have a partnership with it, they refer us to Endicott College who conducts the survey for us. And we sent the link out to parents, put it on the, I believe it was put on the website as well, for a certain duration, you can only have it up for so long and then it has to close. And we, that survey was compiled by researchers at Endicott College. We received copies of that. And then we passed that out, distributed that. Cheryl mentioned seven committees. All the faculty got copies of the survey. So each of those committees had opportunity to work on this, to incorporate the results of the survey into their findings, into this, into whether they were talking about curriculum or they were talking about assessment, they got an opportunity to reference that. And then the 16 evaluators also get copies of the survey and then they incorporate And then the 16 evaluators also get copies of the survey, and then they incorporate what they feel is, what they want to, I guess, you know, include in their report. And so, and they use that data, it's just another data point, they tried to get data from focus groups, interviews, from obviously lots of observation, and of course from the survey, as well as looking at really thorough document review.
No, it just seemed to, there was a couple of comments in there, it seemed to provide a slightly different insight to some of the things, and I was just wondering, is that something that we, that can be continued over time, so that you can use that as a baseline of evolution of sentiment? Sentiment is the only term that came to mind here, but it gave to me a good reflection of how various initiatives were interpreted, or actions interpreted by staff, or the other people filling out the survey. Just something to think about there, you know, I know we got so many initiatives, but it did provide sort of a different set of data points to help where we're at with the assessment.
And it really speaks to phase two of educator evaluation in terms of the survey portion that the state is still working on. So some valuable data can be certainly teased out from doing things like that. One point that I failed to mention, and this is probably perfect timing, is when the team starts writing their reports, they have to defend their reports in front of the entire group. And it's a real interesting process to watch, because their perceptions are filtered by all of the group together, and it takes hours and hours to come up with the commonalities that you see in the report. And that's really quite a good process, an extensive process, to ensure that all of the data they collected, whether it be qualitative or quantitative, was scrutinized before it actually hit print.
All right. And just a couple other observations here. Again, I thought it was well-balanced, and in fact, actually, as we talk about, and I won't go into detail here, but we talked about the negotiations and the interest-based bargaining, there was observations on sort of that could be interpreted from both sides of the fence there, from the teacher's perspective and the administration's perspective, that might be useful discussion points during the interest-based bargaining approach to, you know, where do we need to be moving things here, just something that, you know, just struck me as an alternative. You know, we have a set of data here in a report that's not just produced just in-house here, and maximizing, you know, the usage of that, I think, is important. And then that brought up my last point here, is there's some aspects out of this in terms of that we need to also provide to the board of selectmen and the finance committee. You know, it speaks to, you know, the technology, the staffing levels, the maintenance, you know, the substantive changes things there, you know, that I think, you know, it validates a lot what we've been saying internally. I think it might be useful for us to determine how do we produce an executive summary of that, and formally transmit the report to those two other committees, you know, to the selectmen and the finance committees, but, I mean, there's a lot of good success here also, that I think shows the fruits of the investment that the town has made, and also shows where we still have to be conscious about that investment. And we need their support, not just our advocacy, in order to actually manifest those into the budget realities that we need, that we face.
Very well stated.
Okay, Yumman's work. You guys did fantastic in the prep leading up to it for the three years. More than one principal had been involved over the time since the last report, four superintendents since the last report.
It changes.
What I think is important is that there's been a culture in the town that is a continuity, speaks to, because over a 10-year period, very long period. Rich, you're the only one left from that, right?
This is true.
So, so think of all the turnover.
Right.
So Rich is the only person in the room who was here then.
Back with, during, 10 years ago.
Last time she was done.
Right.
So everybody else in the room has had turnovers, to include almost all the students, you know, the second, third graders, and they're all gone also now from way back then. So please do thank the staff, the faculty, everybody that was involved, because it's certainly from you all down, down through the custodians, because you mentioned the building. So all those folks in between are to be commended for what they've done. We know we're going to do this, but just to make it official, please put the NEASK report on the webpage, the district webpage. It came up that October is when you have that first report back too, realizing that summer is two and a half so months between now and then. I'd ask that you consider, please, maybe about May, because probably by the end of the school year, you'll be pretty much ready as to what you want to report in October. So maybe May, roughly five months or so, nine and a half months from now.
Yeah, I'm doing this part of our end of the year.
Just come back to us and let us know. So those priorities that Mike asked you to, that you have developed, and maybe articulate them, and maybe rearrange them a little bit between now and then.
Yep.
If you could let us know while we're here on that, please.
Sure.
Amongst the recommendations, we're also recommendations for the school committee, you know, governance on long-range planning, and how we can make some improvements there, so we're going to continue in that process. Mike is a subcommittee, certainly work with the FINCOM and the Board of Selectmen, and some of the other things that Steve has done for us also. There's areas there for us to improve also, on how we as a school committee, you know, help you achieve those resources, so that you can implement some of those recommendations. Why is this important to the town? And I think we can pretty much say it this way, is that when your child or your grandchild applies to a college, coming from an accredited school has some importance. Can I say that uncategorically?
Oh, there's no question.
This is important. It shows from an outside body that our educators are agreeing what's necessary to educate the children of our town. Some of the things that other people do outside of the education department, you know, what are the people doing to give resources for us? The infrastructure, the buildings. There's a school district not far from here whose accreditation is threatened right now because of their building. I spoke to a teacher from another state who happened to be on a team, and they were in a school district, and while the NEASK team was being in-briefed, some of the ceiling felt in on them. That particular building had been neglected for many, many years. In a way, the district was very happy that happened, because now that NEASK report firsthand, you need to do something about this building, and that particular municipality had to deal with it. So there's some very concrete, no pun intended, examples as to why this is important also. Then, a good school does a heck of a lot for property values also, and the general common wheel of the entire town depends heavily on how good the education system is. This is an outside validation. Darrell, your point about communicating with Board of Selectmen, Kelly and I have already signed out a letter to the Board of Selectmen, precisely that, because of the importance and that their support is certainly appreciated all through now, but it's a continuing process. It's not something that just ends. So, I want to make sure I hit on my points, you're going to get it on the webpage at SUPER, back in May, please, if you could, or, you know, play with that, what you think is the right time, but certainly before school is out.
We'll tie it in with our final year reports.
Yeah. Those are the points I'd like to make.
Thank you so much.
Thank you again.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Bella, can I ask a couple questions?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, yeah, so when I was reading through, like, the combinations and stuff, with the rubrics and a lot of the cultural stuff, which I've seen some of those in my classes, but I was wondering if the teachers were helping, like, if you have a way to check in with teachers and see if those are actually being used and if they're effective, because sometimes it seems like the rubrics don't really line up that well with all the levels of classes, like, it might be a great rubric for like a sophomore class, but it wouldn't really apply to a freshman or a junior class.
Right, I'd have to take a look and see which specific rubric you're talking about. There are teacher-generated rubrics, department-generated rubrics that are separate from what NEASK calls school-wide rubrics, and this is supposed to be shared in common. And so, you know, we could certainly go over that, if you could show me an example, you know, we could follow up. And it is a process though that we'll be working on throughout the year ahead, or the remainder of this year, the year ahead in terms of a new year. Throughout 2014, all the rubrics will be examined, and then we have to report back to NEASK about how we're doing with them.
I asked the teachers in the staff meeting yesterday to provide me with some examples of assignments where they've used the rubrics, and I got a bunch of them emailed to me yesterday. The intent of the rubric, if you see one, is that it was easy enough for the teacher to just cut and paste it right on to the end of an assignment, as an assignment that they're going to use the rubric for. So you would see it right, attached right down there. And our system of being able to collect those is to have students collect them as they go along, so I'm putting together a sample notebook, you're welcome to stop by and see that if you want.
Okay, yeah, and then one of the other things I was wondering about, and I don't know if this is like wrapped up in that civic rubric thing, but, so one of the things that they're talking about as far as culture goes, and maybe I just have the, I don't know, I was wondering, do you believe that there is fundamentally a culture of respect at our high school? Because we definitely have a lot of, like, really great teachers and really great students, but I feel like a lot of times the culture within a classroom is maybe not necessarily one that's built on respect, as opposed to like a feeling of, you know, like they have to be there or something. Do you have anything?
Do I have something to add to that? I do know we're a school community of over 400 adolescents, and there are definitely lapses in judgment, and there are lots of moments when there might be displays throughout, over the course of a year. We deal with it routinely from a disciplinary perspective, where there are moments of disrespect. But overall, the finding of the evaluators in the report was a genuine sense of respect shared among, between students and the staff, and a culture of respect is what they described it as. And I, as a principal, that I feel charged with, you know, trying to make sure that we model and cultivate respect each and every day. So that's something we strive for. There are days though when, you know, there might be a moment of disrespect that you may have witnessed for sure. I know I've witnessed them over my five years at Littleton High School, in terms of interactions with different students here or there. But we're there to help them and help them grow and become more respectful and responsible citizens.
Important point to remember also is the evaluators come in with a very broad perspective. They've seen many schools in their career, and we have a tendency when we're in one school to have a perception based on that one experience. Those group of evaluators came in with very varied experiences, and when they congregated together and talked about climate, they had an opportunity to share their experiences with each other before they came up with their finalized statements. And it was very clear from their eyes that we should be very proud of the climate that we have. Of course, every now and again, we're going to have slippages, that's part of what happens as people grow up. But I'd like to say it only happens then, but we know better than that. Whenever, whatever walk of life you're in, you only have 10 meetings or be in groups where perhaps behavior or attitudes could be better, so.
And if I could just add one thing too, just to set you at ease about it, I know you're there every day with me, but, you know, if we looked at other buildings and other high schools throughout the area, one of the, when people come and visit Littleton High School, one of the things they notice right away, and they compliment right away, are the quality of the students and how courteous they are, and how nicely they conduct themselves, just in terms of the simple little politeness or manners around, holding doors, or just saying hello, looking someone in the eye. Genuinely, generally, almost every year, there's a visitor that, you know, who makes a mention of that. I know you've had people certainly come up to you and say that, and I think that's what you're getting at, right? Student respect, or are you talking about staff respect?
I think both. And, you know, it comes up not so much with like everyday teachers, but a lot of times with substitutes, or, you know, or sometimes there will be, especially with new teachers, it's somewhat of, you know, like, students, a lot of times, like, look at that as a challenge of how they can, you know, like, what can we get away with?
Yeah.
With this new teacher who's new to the school system. That's something that I've noticed, and I've talked to a lot of people about this recently, and they've also observed that. And then the system kind of breaks down a lot of times, because I think that teachers get a lot of the students who are like troublemakers, not that they, you know, of course, and I realize, I'm completely cognizant of the fact that there are always going to be people who will act up in class, and that, you know, of course, but I feel like sometimes, you know, new teachers will get a whole bunch of kids that aren't, you know, know not to be super respectful, and then it's just sort of a perfect storm. And I was wondering if that's something that you guys have been thinking about? I can think of a few teachers who that's happened to.
Yeah, this year in particular, if we were just looking back on incidents related to discipline or disrespect, the cases are, whether, it's not confined to new teachers, actually, some of our most veteran staff have been challenged at times from different students. And it's just not that uncommon as an experienced educator who's been in lots of different buildings, either as a visitor or as someone who's worked in different places. Littleton High School is awesome, you know, when it comes to students' conduct. There are always days, there's not a day that goes by if you're in building management of a school with hundreds and hundreds of adolescents where there won't be issues.
Or younger students.
Younger students do. It's just part of the growth and development process. And so, you know, I'd like to offer you that reassurance.
Johnny, continues on beyond adolescents too, those lapses in judgment you described.
I think it's a challenge.
Eda, could you come?
One second. Anything else?
I don't think so.
What?
That sounds to talk more about classroom control, which is, you know, one sector I think of respect. And I know, Kelly, in my conversations with you, you've certainly been critical of the way that teaching colleges in this country sort of focuses less on those sorts of metrics, of, not metrics, skill sets. When teachers, not just new teachers, but when teachers do enter the classroom, if it is for the first time, or whether they're an experienced teacher, that's always going to be an issue, because you're working with a lot of different people, and people, you know, people are different, and have different expectations, and have different interests, and certainly that shows itself when we look at classroom discipline.
When you go to teaching, you will be tested, there's no question.
Yeah, and
Did he curriculum?
No, no.
Did he just let you curriculum out of the bag there?
I'm putting it in the bag now. But in terms of, in terms of when we have visitors in schools, I think it's oftentimes harder for them to see that the students sort of behave better, but it's certainly an issue that I think staff can work with, either with the administration
Yeah.
or with, certainly students one-on-one, but also when we talk more about teachers collaborating with one another, that's sure to come up. So I'm hopeful that though Littleton may be certainly above the pack in that aspect, that doesn't mean we should stop striving, and I know that's certainly your opinion and college's opinion as well.
Something happens every day at high school.
All right, we're not going to go down that rabbit hole of your everyday discipline issues. Thank you.
I just wanted to acknowledge it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else on that, Kelly?
No.
All right, Alex, Mass DOT meeting?
Yes, on December 13th, we had a meeting at the high school with three Mass DOT representatives. Steve Mark was there, John Harrington was there, we had Jimmy Clyde from the Highway Department, we had Chief of Police, John Kelly, and we have a Deputy Chief there as well. We also had our legislative delegation, Representative Arciero and Senator Poldridge. And I think, on behalf of the town, we made a pretty good case for having some sort of impact due to the dangerousness of the Littleton High School intersection. We had, the police department made a compelling case for change, and John shared some of his experiences seeing students out there every single day, not just students but parents and the entire community, trying to make that turn there. And I know it's something that the committee has been concerned about for a number of years, probably since the building was built, but certainly we discussed it several months ago, and I wanted to follow up. The Mass DOT engineers, because we were meeting at the high school, they had the opportunity to experience the intersection themselves, and though I think they shared some of our concerns, they said they were restricted, of course, by federal regulations, not state regulations, they said, but by federal regulations in terms of traffic flow, and when you put in a traffic light, or when you change a speed limit in certain areas, there are only, there's a certain criteria you have to meet. And so they said, we'll look at, we'll look into it again, but it doesn't sound like you're going to be able to meet that, this criteria. And the criteria that we were talking about, I think the Chief of Police agreed, and State Mark agreed, and certainly I would agree, we probably are not likely to meet the criteria we would need, what was it? Close to 90 or 100 vehicles exiting from the high school every hour for eight hours a day in order to get a stoplight in there.
Correct, and then certain pedestrian, pedestrian traffic as well.
Right.
A number of thresholds that we would need to meet.
That's Department of Transportation, US Department of Transportation regulation you just cited?
Yes, that's a
Okay, Department of Transportation for the United States says we need to have 80 to 100 cars an hour exiting our high school on a state highway. I just want to be clear, you're telling us that the US Department of I just want to be clear, you're telling us that the US Department of Transportation is telling us what we can do in Littleton, at our high school?
Right, and my concern was that because it's, Mass DOT basically said that their hands were tied by federal reg-, by federal regulations. What I would like to do.
That's, I want to make sure this is absolutely crystal clear as to what you're saying.
Yes.
And absolutely correct. Mass DOT said it's the federal government that says we cannot do that.
Right.
At our high school.
They said it's federal, federal restrictions. What I would, what I would like to do, we did discuss with the Mass DOT representatives the likelihood of their state engineer making an exception, which they said was possible, although has never happened with this current state engineer. So that sort of, sort of shows, we, we also asked jokingly, you know, how long until he retires?
What commitment do we get from our state legislators?
They, they said they were certainly willing to work with Mass DOT, but Mass DOT said their hands were tied. What I would like to do is.
What are the specific way, what were the, Alex? It's a lot of platitudes right now because as you said, as long as I've been on the committee, and probably since, as long as the building there, you can probably tell I'm angry, especially when I got some Western bureaucrats telling us what we can or cannot do outside our high school and the Mass DOT just saying, I'm sorry, but my hands are tied. Now what are our legislators doing and what are we going to do going forward with our federal legislators?
Well, yes, what I was trying to say was that I would like to reach out to Representative Songus's office and also depending on our, our success there, to our Senator's offices as well.
Let's please get a commitment from our, our legislators too.
Our legislators have indicated a commitment to try to fix the issue, but because it's a federal issue, as you know, our state legislators can't, can't address that.
Do they say, because I always heard that the reason they couldn't do it was because it was a state, we couldn't do it in Littleton, was because it was a state road. Now is the state saying that it's a, is it a federal road?
Yes, and I had that same sort of reaction there as well. I was not a.
What makes it a federal road?
It's not a federal.
It's federal guidelines that the state has to adhere to.
Yeah, and I'm sure there's money tied to that.
Hey, just like the fifty-five mile an hour speed limit, remember that one?
No.
Federal highway transportation.
So the State Department of Transportation officials did, did agree to do some additional studies and to go back and possibly do some additional traffic counts, pedestrian counts to see if maybe we meet those thresholds and to see what the current levels are. So they're looking at that. We did talk about what can we do to help mitigate some of that, so possibly some additional signage that put up identifying that there's a school entrance.
The positive steps.
Possibly looking at using an alternative exit to the high school at certain times to alleviate some of that traffic onto one-ten. Things that we might be able to do within the town to help alleviate some of that as well. So there are a number of things going on.
And the, there is also, in addition to the traffic counts that they'll be looking at, they're going to be working with our Police Department to review any incidences that have, you know, merited, you know, any accidents in that intersection. The chief said that we, in the meeting, we have been, at this point, lucky to not have any serious incidents. Unfortunately, that's always the way it is. It's always, you're lucky until you're not. And we're, we of course are very concerned about that.
Nearly governor's made a lot of that luck for us.
Yeah, yeah, and Millie, we did mention that, Millie, you know, is out there.
The community too, I mean, the people that use that turn every day are good to each other. You know, the regular users of that, of that intersection are good to each other. You see that every day. But the problem is that obviously it's a well-traveled road where not everybody is a frequent driver. Or they just don't know.
And we did raise the fact that there's a new plant coming online down the street that's going to increase the traffic even more, et cetera. So they're looking at the issue, but honestly, we weren't hopeful from the State Department of Transportation.
So what I would, what I would propose doing is, and I'm certainly willing to do this, do this myself, since I've been involved thus far, is I'm going to reach out to the Congresswoman's office and also the Senator's offices and see if there's something we can, we can do. I think, you know, the higher up you go, the less likely it is we're going to see some, some action, but if there's a chance, I think we should take it.
Get something to say?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I suspected this was the conclusion they would come to because, you know, just in terms of my own reviewing of the various things there. And I, I almost feel that some, one of the letters that said, we send out here should use the term cowards hiding behind federal regulation. Because what they're going to do is they want us to have somebody die at that intersection before they do something. And that's cowardice on their part to not stand up and recognize that the safety of students and children are what's at stake there. And then hiding behind quoting some nebulous federal regulation is just disgusting.
We did bring up those exact words. Will it take a major accident at that intersection to cause somebody to take a look at it? And really, they just skirted the issue.
You guys didn't use coward that day though.
No, we didn't use that word coward, but we did bring up the point that maybe it would take a severe or fatality at that accident for them to look at it and they just kind of skirted the issue.
We can commiserate all day long. What I'd like you to do, please Alex, is get the specific commitment our legislators are willing to do. Get that so you can present that to us. Not that we're willing to do something, we're all willing to do something. Need specific. Our State Rep will do this, contact this organization, that person or whatever. Our State Senator will do whatever. Clear, concrete steps. That way we can go to Representative Songus with, this is what our legislators at the state level are doing for us. How can you help us now? And then also, if you can please, get the citation of the specific federal regulation so that we have it and when we write our letters and maybe use the word coward in it, we can cite the specific regulation. Okay? Because otherwise, bill's already left. You know, we had a good lesson this evening in how to use source citations and the like. It's the only way you get this done. The platitudes of, well, we're all willing to do something, doesn't hack it. So can, you want to step forward, do all that?
Absolutely.
Okay, super. All right. Now another thing, we had a meeting on the twelfth of December and it didn't come up that our two reps were going to be in town the next day. We even spoke with the two reps. So let's keep that on our radar scope, folks. We know our State reps are coming to town and especially participating in a meeting specific to our schools and that the school committee knows about it and is able to proclaim it publicly so that the public can show up too if they so wish and add their gravitas to the requests and the things we're trying to take or happen. That didn't happen on the twelfth, so we've got to be careful there, folks. Okay, okay. All right, Alex, it's not an easy job dealing with Beacon Hill, is it?
It's not Beacon Hill I'm worried about. The Congresswoman's office, or rather, the, the issue here, I, I see it as there's too much, too many layers to this problem and everyone's pointing at someone else and saying, oh, it's his fault.
See how it works? Shared responsibility means no one's responsible. Okay, anything else on that?
No, thank you.
All right, appreciate it. Okay, school committee goals are listed and they're in our package and then the package gets posted. We had voted to approve those and that's for information only this evening. It's not under our business, but the park letter that we talked about, sending to the Commissioner of Education, Christian Chester, currently copying our legislators, went out December sixteenth with Christmas holidays and the like. Certainly, there's a lot of work going on in Beacon Hill and they haven't had an opportunity to get to any of this yet. So we've not yet received a response from folks, but certainly one will be forthcoming, I should think. Superintendent Report.
First item on the report is Chloe and I know we haven't been back that long. Chloe, do you have anything that you'd like to highlight this evening?
Oh, for the student achievement?
Yeah.
Yeah, so at the high school, when Chris Heron, the former basketball player and drug addiction educator, I guess you could call him that, came, I think in December to our school and afterwards, the graphics classes that Mr. Allen teaches, to say thank you, put together this really cool video and also a book with talking about students experiencing Chris Heron. And it won a couple of national awards, so he's going to be coming back to the high school in a couple of weeks to visit with the students who helped make those projects, correct? Yeah, I don't know what the date is on that. Twenty eighth?
Twenty seventh to twenty eighth, I think you're right, twenty eighth.
Yeah, so that is excellent and really exciting. And I know our crew team did really well this season. So, and then should I do, would you like me to do the events that are coming up?
Sure, that'd be great.
Okay. So at Shaker Lane on January thirty-first is Winter Fest from five to eight PM. And so they have all kinds of, I volunteered there last year, it's really cool. They have all these different activities and like get pizza and stuff and they have a bunch of raffles. And then on February fifth, there's kindergarten registration from one to four PM and six to seven-thirty PM. And it only takes like ten minutes to register. At Russell Street, there will be a school council meeting on February fourth at three PM, a PTA meeting on February sixth at one PM, and also on February sixth, the student-staff basketball game, which is really fun, is at six-fifteen PM. And then at the middle school, they would like to, oh, congratulate Alex Rizzy?
Rizzi.
Rizy?
Rizzi.
Rizy, Alex Rizy, for winning the middle school geography bee. And then coming up there will be on February fifth, the Principal's Coffee, followed by the PTA meeting on the seventh, the sixth grade kids' night out, the twenty-seventh, the family volleyball night, and on March seventh, the third annual Littleton Middle School Talent Show. So.
Excellent.
Yeah, middle school mid-year exams are next week and I think that's pretty much it for today.
Well done, thank you.
It took Chloe's first issue there, Chris Heron presenting the schools, front page of The Independent today, right down here. Under the fold, but still it's front page.
And it's a nice report on this geography bee, on page three or four. So one thing we've been talking about, you know, in the, in the goals is, you know, the student focus on the pieces here. And I have one suggestion to throw up for consideration for a future meeting is whether we want to move Chloe's report to the beginning of the meeting. So we open with the student achievements here and also facilitate if we're running late, that if, you know, we don't have to hold her until the end of the meeting occasionally there. But I mean, you know, I was thinking as we were talking about that goal there is opening with a student-centric activity, so it reminds us and grounds us all as to why we're here each and every time on it as opposed to having it buried in the middle of the meeting here. Just something to, you know, I guess I pose that to the committee as a, as a general thought as we try to make subtle shifts in, in the way we're doing business here.
I'm going to go jump into capital.
You bet. In your package, you had a, or have a draft copy of a long-range capital plan. We always redo the ten-year plan, so to speak, every year. This year, we've, we had the luxury of using that capital asset report that was completed by an outside company that the town had brought in, so that, we found that very helpful. To bring greater context to this, we were contacted by the town and asked for, after an updated plan. And I sent you some information also that we're going to be covering later on tonight in, in terms of what does the capital planning mean for, for all departments of the town when we take into account the potential upcoming building of a new fire station? And there's been talk that they may wish to do that if possible within the tax levy. So this information is always pertinent, but I, I think the level of pertinency rises when you have those situations to make sure that we can give the town some good information in terms of our projected liabilities over the next ten years. So we put that in there for your perusal and, Mr. Chairman, it's up to you. We could certainly take care of the, the second half of this that was under the.
Yeah.
Finance report if you'd like, here's. And the second part deals with the long sheets of paper that you have. Some great details and this again was taken from the company that came in and took a look at our schools. And you can see when you go through that report that we calculated certain liabilities from year to year. And if you go to the second page, you can see the summary. So this information, I think, is great information to share with the town as we talk to the town about not only this year's budgeting, but what our capital expenditures may look like in terms of our buildings within the next period of time. And it's projected out to twenty thirty-two. It's a long ways away, but it does give you some good information. A point of caution, sometimes you'll have years where certain items will appear that perhaps according to the longevity chart need to be replaced. Sometimes that's not necessary. Light fixtures are a prime example. I've seen it many times because I've always had a capital replacement plan for the buildings that I've had. Quite often, when a school's ten to twelve years old, they recommend total replacement of fixtures, which is costly. Quite often, you can change bulbs and increase efficiencies, et cetera, so you may not have to go to that extent. So there needs to be a critical eye that's involved in analyzing their recommendations as well.
So the second page is a summary of, the company that did the outside report is called EMG. So the second page is a summary of the EMG report and those, those totals will not necessarily agree with the first page of the data, of the information that you, you have, that ten-year capital plan. That ten-year capital plan is a town, is a plan that we put together using the town format with all the other departments and it may include some projects that are not on this EMG report, so, and vice versa. So I just want to be clear that the two are not necessarily tied to each other, but I tried to feed the ten-year town capital report off of the major projects that the EMG report identified, just to be clear.
Well, it's a little daunting. You see some spikes in, in cost, twenty sixteen, one point one million, twenty eighteen, almost one point one million. Then you jump up to twenty twenty-one, which is interesting because the town debt actually in twenty twenty-one in terms of within the tax levy and outside, you can see that steady decline. On twenty twenty-one, if I remember correctly, the, the actual pictorial graphs looked pretty good. Then when I looked at the, the sheet that we created here, two point four million dollars were the projected upgrades in terms of our buildings during that year. So again, good information to, to take a look at.
Did you want to speak more?
No, I'd be glad to answer any questions. Again, the, the first page, which is the ten-year plan that we worked together and the principals had some input and, and identified some areas such as landscaping, things like that, that's included in that ten-year report that it, with the school committee's permission, after you review it, whether it's today or a couple of weeks, we can release to the town so they can incorporate that data into their long-range ten-year plan as well, so.
And the anticipation is the efficacy of the information is there. So working with Bonnie and Stephen, who he just makes good sense from the get-go, unless you guys have any objection to that.
No, I mean, I like this, this is kind of the format we were talking about before so we can make sure we capture, you know, everything moving forward as well as things that we delay, we can easily move them to the next year.
Right, and I have these going back for the, in fact, the rest of the spreadsheet has some hidden columns that probably have prior years.
Well, as Kelly stated earlier, you know, you don't have to do everything based on a specific schedule, light fixtures was your example. But there was, it does show, you know, the twenty twenty-one year, two point four million, but then also the year before, seventy-one thousand dollars. So, I mean, we don't do it to the right, we move it to the left.
Correct.
So that way more even flow of a budget.
Right. And you have to remember the EMG company did, used industry standard, useful life of product and what the estimated life is, so that's how they came up with those numbers.
The Univens at Shaker Lane, I think, perhaps illustrated that well, where we certainly wanted to replace them all and their life expectancy was what it was, but we went over a, a period of time to replace those.
So approximately four more years to get the rest of those done.
Which is a great way of doing it and there are a couple of areas that always raise one's eyebrows when you look at roofing, who know you're working on borrowed time and you hit the longevity and boilers is another area that if you're getting close to that life expectancy, you know, one needs to have a plan in place.
You know, and I think the, the, you know, the story of during the, whatever school district where the, this roof fell in the day they came to visit demonstrates also the dangers of just constantly deferring maintenance.
Correct.
Because then your only option is to replace your whole building versus extending its life on it, you know? And I think, you know, as the selectmen and the finance committee develop their overall thesis there, I think they'll have to make a conscious decision about, you know, what is the, what's the percentage of investment in maintaining the current infrastructure just versus also just building new infrastructure. We can always keep building new infrastructure and starve all the money to preserve the operation of the current buildings there. And then your only option is, is just let. And then your only option is, is just let them run into the ground and build new ones, and then I don't think that does anybody any justice either.
There is a school out in the western part of Massachusetts that's over 100 years old that's still being used as a school. And again, it's important to note, that first page of the 10-year plan includes site items such as capital require, I mean, technology requests and things like that. The, the EMG study is solely based on facilities. The 10-year plan includes technology requests and things like that, that the school district needs educationally as well, so...
Darryl, you brought up an excellent point. 20 years ago, that just seemed to be the culture, in terms of wearing the building out, but states can't afford it. And what, what happened within that 20-year period to now is people have been faced with a lot of hardship in terms of tolerating buildings that are in dire need of repair, and most states have come up with minimum requirements every year in terms of capital repair, so that they don't get themselves in that spot ever again. So the culture has changed. Now it's a matter of setting it as a priority and, and, you know, moving forward as a, as a school committee and, and school system, and also as a town, investing in the infrastructures that we have, because we're, we're very proud of our infrastructures, and we certainly want to do whatever we can to keep them in the condition that they're in.
You know, my point of break, part of my point bringing up is, is, you know, our job here is, is not just to maintain a building, it's to provide the education services, and we've got to be careful that we're not conflicted because of their, of town budget constraints, that we have to defer educational money into maintenance money, and make up, and force us to be making that trade-off, because that's not a trade-off we should be making here on it. We need to be making sure that, you know, it's a town-wide investment in the infrastructure, and then we can continue to provide the education pieces, and not trading our budget off to, to maintain buildings.
Well stated.
We're also watching if there's any of these projects that the, that the town does approve, or the school can, if it goes in that process, if that's another project that we can work with the state and the MSBA authority to get additional funding with that, then we'll, we'll look at that as well, but that's quite a ways down the road, I think.
First, I want to reiterate, how good a finance team we have in the town, we really do. Top Moody bond rating, all reports, the accountants, you know, they come through, do the auditing, the excellent job Stephen Moody, Bonnie are doing, Steve, what you're doing with the schools, because, you know, we've got the biggest piece of the pie, for sure, for the entire town, and it's roughly, you know, 50% of the operating budget of the town comes good to the schools, and roughly 2/3 of the total town budget is school-related. When we start looking at the post-employment benefits, healthcare, retirement, when we look at debt maintenance on the buildings, so, I would offer, Darryl, there are trade-offs to be made, because it isn't all going to be just everything, we're not going to do everything, which gets us to, in another building project in town, as to how it may or may not be funded, while other people are going to make the absolute decision, we're involved in the dialogue. And I think a lot of the work Mike is doing with the FENCOM and the board of selectmen, some of the joint meetings that we have, that sort of dialogue can take place, because there's opportunity costs involved here, as you know well. So if we put the money someplace, if we want to buy down debt, as an example, and debt is inexpensive to maintain, it is better not to buy it down so quickly, and put it someplace else. If we choose that first example, we're not doing something else, and that starts to involve the trade-offs that concern you, so I agree with you in that regard. But that's a dialogue that we must engage with the town as we move forward. They're making some really great decisions, and I support them 100% as to what they're, especially at OPEC, as we're trying to fund liabilities out into the future. It just makes sense. Some of us here at this table won't be around to worry about it, you know, we may be at another little park, you know, resting peacefully, by the time that comes along.
Be part of the social science.
But some of us in the room will be. And that's, you know, we talk about being stewards, not just stewards for today, stewards tomorrow, next week, next year, next decade, and on and on. So those are, those are important decisions that we're going to be involved in. Which, if I can use that as a segue before we get into, if I may, and that is planning board, and the activity of the planning board, and how important their function is here in our town. I think we, at least I'd like us to think about liaising with them, and getting an understanding of how they see the town moving, but then also they have an understanding of how we, who in some way, shape, or form, has the biggest part of the population again, and then certainly as we talk about the budget, and what does planning board decisions impact the schools, and then frankly, what do our decisions impact the town as a whole, and thus cause the planning board maybe to make some decisions that they have to make in order to keep the town viable. So I'd like you to think about that, please, guys, and, and at some point, before too many more weeks go by, I'd like one of us to step up and be the debt liaison with the planning board, which, I'll begin with you, I'm bringing it up to you right now, and the impetus right now is the Carmen Fletcher property issue. It's on the front page again, it's probably been on the front page every other three months for the last five or six years, in The Independent, and certainly subject to town meetings. That's a big piece of property, there's, there's many reasons to protect that, and that it serves everybody's interest, the owners certainly, and then the town as a whole also. So that's just an example, and it provides, as I say, that impetus for my discussion tonight with you all. So if we could think about that, please, or any comments, for sure.
I think it's a great idea.
And if it's something we decide, yeah, we'll pursue, okay, touch the planning board chairman, and see how they may like to see this work, if at all.
Good, thank you for bringing up the discussion in a larger context. We are fortunate to have the town leaders that we do, and the elected officials that we do, they do everything they can to provide top-notch services to the public.
Okay, food services.
So in your packet, we're numbers through, let me, give me a second, let me just pull it up here. We're numbers through November. Their meal counts are where they were two years ago, so we've recouped back to that level, they're up from last year. Financially speaking, however, we're still running a deficit in the food service account. We're doing some additional analysis on why that is, we're looking at ways to mitigate those losses, and what we can do and still stay within the USDA meal guidelines. One quick note to that is, the federal government did, did enact a, additional reimbursements back to the district, it's not going to account for much this year, it's about $400, $500 a month. Because we are meeting those USDA meal guidelines, we do get additional reimbursement. So I think the US government does recognize that their new guidelines are impacting financially on districts, and they're trying to do that, but obviously not to the level I think, I need, I think they need to, but... So, you know, the, the meal counts are up, we're working with the wellness committee and the food service manager to come up with some additional strategies and different meal options, to try to turn that around a little bit. Right now, the numbers are, we are running at a deficit right now, so, not sure what all the information you want.
Well, we're doing what we can, Steve, I think that's important to point out. Stay tuned for some soup offering at our schools, looking forward to that, I think that'll be a great addition. And cafeterias are moving into some taste-tested approaches, too, so...
Remind us about the free meals and compensation from federal, state, on free meals.
So I don't know all the numbers off the top of my head, but we get, for every free or reduced meal we, we serve to qualifying families, we get reimbursement back that covers pretty much the cost of what we're charging for a meal. So that comes back in the form of revenue back to the program.
But if I read between the lines there, even on the free meals, we probably losing some money as a district?
Uh, yes, yes.
That's important.
Yes, and we're doing...
As we look at the three as a daddy have here, from '12 to the current year, we're a 50% increase in free meals.
Correct.
Which means we've increased our costs, if you will.
Correct.
From reimbursed costs. All right.
And I think it's good news that the meal count is up.
Yeah.
Because that, that was obviously a huge driver last year. And based on the discussions I've had in the budget subcommittee, we've talked about this, the, the costs are sort of per item costs, it's the cost to provide the meals, we're not talking about unexpected capital costs, right, in terms of equipment.
That's correct.
Or staffing, or things along those lines.
That's correct, this is, we have to, we had to, we had to increase the number of fresh fruits and vegetables, so that obviously costs more to get that product in. There's, you know, you can't use a breaded chicken patty anymore, you have to use a whole meat chicken patty, so it costs more to get that product in, things like that. So we're actually trying to do some analysis on, down to the specific meal level, to see what it costs per meal that we're serving versus what we're selling that meal for, to see what that is, and then we can go back to the committee with possibly some recommendations.
Free meals would change to that delta. With that 50% increase of free meals being served, that's bringing the count up when we look at this.
Yes.
Interesting observation.
You made a very, very structured effort to educate folks in town, which is excellent, as to eligibility and who can participate, so I think, anyways, that that count is directly attributable to some of the efforts you've put in since arriving, so I want to thank you there.
And that's meaningful, because on the other end, there are other programs where we benefit by virtue of having that.
Correct.
Even though we may be, you know, losing, losing's not the term I want to use, we may be spending more money than we used to spend on providing meals for qualifying families. You know, there is, there are ancillary benefits in terms of qualifications for other reimbursements.
Title I grant money is hinging upon what our free and reduced numbers are for instance.
And that, you raise an excellent point, because the delta now, when it's all said and done, is positive, if you will.
Right, right.
You know, we're using some business terms now, lost leaders, if you will.
Right.
But in the aggregate, we're coming out ahead.
Right.
So...
And that's the right thing to do for a lot of different reasons, but...
Right. So, you know, as I said, we're doing everything we can within the program to keep expenses down, reduce expenses, to try to mitigate that, it may, time will tell if it's enough through the, through the year, but...
I mean, the other thing that I think we have to keep in mind is, is that, you know, I'm satisfied that, as long as we know that it's, it's related to the operation of the food services and not unexpected, or things that we could have planned for that we didn't, that we got caught short on, that would be more disturbing to me. The second thing to keep in mind is, is that we need to be in the business of providing food during the day, because it has a positive impact on the kid's ability, you know, to conduct themselves and achieve at the level that we expect them to. So, and while we are running a deficit, it's not a back-breaking deficit, so as long as the efforts are being made, you know, it, I don't think there's going to have an outsized impact on our ability to fund other aspects of what we do, so I don't think it's something we have to, you know, be overly concerned about, as long as we know it's being addressed.
I mean, I, I attended a couple of the wellness committee meetings there, I mean, it's a, it's a great group that's formed with that, and they're, they're energetic around looking at different ideas. I just even saw the recent email trade they had with John on, you know, their suggestions, what he's doing, you know, I wanted to, is, I think, you know, nurturing that collaboration and thing there, I think is a good source of ideas, as well as feedback, you know, you know, I think the comment I made at one of their meetings is, is we can try all day, but a meal not eaten has no nutritional value.
Right, right, right.
You know, and you, you see it in the kids when they're getting ready for sports practice after work, that, you know, I mean, after school, they're dragging if they don't have a, a good lunch there, and if they don't eat the lunch because they don't like it, or it's not prepared right, it doesn't matter what we charge, we can give it away to them free, if they're just going to throw it away, it's no good either, so...
True. And we're working on a survey to, to get out to the, to the parent community, to get some feedback as far as, you know, what can we do?
Well, in the student community.
Students are the one...
Right, the student as well.
Parent, right.
So Chloe, how's the food?
I haven't eaten a school lunch in years.
Okay, that answers that question?
Sorry.
My kids eat it every day, and, like, and to the point where their mother wants to know why she's buying deli meat at all, they won't eat it, so...
Well, I for one like their high school chicken parm ones, they're really good.
And every, every time we've had the cafeteria prepare a meal for a function that we've held, I've always been pleased with the food that they serve, so... We're making some strides, we've also, we've also reached out to the council on aging and asked if we could, you know, be of any help in terms of supporting programs, and perhaps keep our staff a little busier and, and create some extra revenue also, so we're looking for different ways to, to tackle the challenge.
Yeah, I think we can do better, but we're trying.
I gotta tell you, as a veteran of having eaten in many, many chow halls around the world, John O'Kash and the company do a good job, yeah, good job.
But, you know, the other thing they mentioned, and I think that, was the, you're having, like, the students engaged in terms of trying to understand what they like and don't like, and what's, what's not working for them, because I think that's the most valuable source of, of feedback.
Right.
It doesn't matter if you like it.
No, no, your, your point's absolutely correct, just, and Steve, you know, still kind of like to think that we can at least compliment him.
Yeah, oh, yeah, no, it's, you know...
Any other questions, or...
I'm, I was very concerned this, this summer when I first saw this problem, about that, that dip in meal sales. I'm glad those are up, that for me was the most, most pressing concern, because that's, to me, spoke of something that, that changed on our end. And of course, with the federal guidelines coming in, that's sort of why that number dipped, and it dipped around the state, both for the state regs and for the federal regs kind of compounding each other.
Right, so you'd see that dip in other districts as well, so it's taken a while, it's taken a while for districts to figure out what works and what guidelines need what product in order to meet that guideline as a product to offer to the students, so...
And I think for the students to get used to the fact that their meals aren't going to taste
Right.
as, not as unhealthy, and perhaps as delicious as, as they have in the past. I also really like, Kelly, that you're looking into the COA. On CNBC, I've been hearing about the COA kitchen for months now, they're trying to redo it, just as an aside, but it would be good to partner with other organizations in town that are serving food at a cost, we can sort of, you know, increase our scale there.
We actually have a spaghetti dinner planned in the spring with the council on aging, and we have music arranged, and our art department's making some clay vases, and so we're excited about that event.
I believe Chloe had her hand up.
Yeah, yeah, so, like, some of the kids at that high school have been wondering if it's possible, and I just don't know, it might be super, like, not cost-efficient, but to have vegetarian options?
Uh, I thought they offered vegetarians now, but I was certainly looking to it.
They have like pizza and stuff, and people are wondering, like, what happened to the salad bar, maybe that was operating a huge loss.
Yeah, I know they're talking about bringing that back, but that, that tends to be a, a big loser, because there's a lot of waste in salad bars, but
Yeah, yeah.
We are looking at bringing that back possibly, so...
Yeah, and other things that people were wanting were, they used to sell yogurts at lunch?
I believe they do.
They do still?
I, I'm not going to, I, I don't know what they do or not, John can probably answer that better than I can at the high school, but certainly I would encourage, when the survey comes out, and it should be out soon,
Oh, okay, cool.
That you encourage all of your, your friends to write those down on that survey and get them back to us.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll participate.
Yeah.
Anything else, guys?
I have a couple of things that I was asked to bring up this evening. We received a membership renewal for the, from the Suburban Coalition, and just to highlight what they do, they, they do, I think, a great job of advocacy for the communities, including our own, and, and beyond school departments, for the towns as well. They've, they've certainly taken opinions from polls and have advocated with elected officials across the state. They network, do a great job of networking with leaders, and they provide us with up-to-date information. I know you've received invitations to a number of workshops this year, all have been very valuable, and they invite town officials as well to take part, so I think you've done a good job. But every year, we bring back the opportunity to you as a school committee to continue your membership or rethink it, and that's what we're doing this evening.
And use the $250.
$250 for a membership.
Does anybody want to make a motion?
Make a motion to renew our...
Membership.
Membership.
Okay, motion's made, seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
I, I oppose.
Yeah, Adamus, well, thank you.
One thing, Chairman Avella, is Alex had sent me an email today, and I'm going to try to temper my Western dialect when I pronounce the name, but we've had a generous donation from a family in town for a memorial scholarship at our high school, it will be called the Francis D'Agostino Scholarship, and it will be awarded to an LHS graduate who's pursuing creative arts at the college level, so I'd just like to acknowledge them this evening, and... So I'd just like to acknowledge them this evening and thank them for setting up a scholarship with us. Was that correct for us?
Yes, yeah. That's how I pronounce it.
Did you say Dagostino?
Dagostino.
Dagostino, yeah.
Cisgastino.
Depends where you're raised.
Since we've said it so many times, we figure we might, might as well plug donations can be made through the Littleton Scholarship Trust of the Dagostino Scholarship.
So it's going to be administered through the trust?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And I was very, very moved that this family that has just recently suffered a loss has turned that into something for the community as a whole to gain. I think we're very grateful for that.
And the other, only other thing is the request to change the budget hearing date to March 13th instead of March 20th.
And that spoke to us because I will be out of the state on the 20th. And certainly we'd like to be here for the public hearing and then certainly to vote on it also.
We can't do it later because we're required to do it. It certainly, timeframe is relative to town meeting. We've discussed this at budget subcommittee. From our point of view, there's no problem doing it a week earlier.
Thank you.
Is there any other problem? July 13th, you're going to be here?
Yeah.
All right. Darryl?
Yeah.
Excellent.
We'll plan accordingly. We update the schedule accordingly because that is one of the ones we publicize.
Yep.
A little more aggressively than the others, expecting to have some turnout, so we'll make sure that a message gets out there.
Will that meeting on the 20th proceed as a general meeting or will we just?
It will be a regular meeting.
Okay.
Who was scheduled, 13th and the 20th anyway?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I thought, so I just want to make sure that we're not calling a new meeting.
No, no.
We just changed the focus of the existing meeting schedule.
To vote 13th, the budget, and then the 20th. Well, that was almost a flip-flop of agenda.
We don't have makeup and snow.
And that's it for my report.
Okay. PMBC Subcommittee, excuse me one sec, Interested citizens, anybody? Okay. PMBC? Budget Subcommittee, I think we've hit everything there except there's a joint meeting, FinCom, Water Selectment, proposed for the 4th of February. Post us for that, please, Kelly. It need not be a committee event, though, I don't think.
I can't make it. Tuesdays are bad for me.
What day was that again?
For Feb. It's being proposed right now. It's not a done deal. But at least let's go and post for it and that way if there's more than two of us there. But it's pretty much to update two directions where FinCom, Water Selectmen are and if they need any information from us as to what we're thinking. And certainly some of the things we talked about this evening, we can discuss with them that evening. On budget, we are in labor negotiations, folks know that. We've talked about the interest-based bargaining. We're continuing with that. Our training is pretty much complete and we've been working together with a facilitator up to this point, with the LEA and the school committee representatives. And everybody's pleased. We're not going to get into the specifics of any of the negotiations, but we may be. It's a mutual understanding between us and the LEA. But what we can say clearly and unequivocally is both parties are pleased with progress at this point. Anything, Kelly?
No. Certainly says, echo what you've said. It's, I think, been a good training and certainly we've, we've had to retool some of our thought process and it's, it's been very valuable and helpful and it's gone very well.
Darryl, policy?
Uh, no, I'm actually falling a little behind a bit. It's hard to catch your minds back up.
Okay. So we kept the night off, but we do have to make it up.
Okay. Before we get prepped for adjournment, anything else, guys?
Do we need an executive session?
No. I don't think so.
I don't.
Yeah, I just gave you the update.
Okay.
Okay, just reminder, this Monday, the 20th of January is Martin Luther King Day. Take an opportunity to not just take the day off, but perhaps reflect on some of the teachings, some of the lessons and how a country's changed since the birth, which was, I guess yesterday was his birthday if I recall right. Martin Luther King's birthday was yesterday. So his life and that.
Actually, I do one other thing. Are you done with that?
Yeah.
Tomorrow night, Littleton Tiger boys basketball versus the Maynor Tigers. Both undefeated league play. It's always a big game, big rivalry. Both, both teams know each other very well, but with the first place in the league and on the line, it's going to be a really great environment, so.
It's a Tiger beat.
Tiger, Tiger tussle, I'm calling it. Tiger tussle. So if you guys are looking for something to do, I know Mr. Puntz has already marked his calendar. It'll be a game, great, it'll be a great environment. It's always fun to have the Maynor. Maynor will come out in force, so they'll come down the road and they'll be here.
Yes. Seven o'clock, boys.
Yeah, seven o'clock for the boys, Bar City, 5:30 for the GB.
Our next meeting is February 6th, right here in this room. Let us please keep you here. If nothing else.
Where in January? Gone? That fast, huh?
Same last meeting in January?
Great.
Five vases.
All the way to February.
That's right.
Moving on.
Okay. Anybody like to make?
Make a motion, no turn.
Second.
Which made a second, any, no, we don't have to discuss this. Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks.